I'll now call the meeting to order, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners for the month of August. At this time, I'll ask that if you have a cellphone, to make sure it's turned off or in a vibrate mode. Otherwise, I can't throw you out, but I can impose a $25 fee. So if you will silence at this time, okay? We'll stand up and we'll have the invocation and the pledge, and I'll ask Commissioner Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Brennan to do the pledge.
Let us pray. "ETERNAL GOD, OUR FATHER, WE ARE GRATEFUL AND THANKFUL THAT YOU HAVE ALLOWED US TO ASSEMBLE HERE ONE MORE TIME. FATHER, WE PRAY THAT YOU WOULD GIVE US THE WISDOM, THE GRACE, COMPASSION, AND UNDERSTANDING TO HANDLE THE BUSINESS OF YOUR PEOPLE IN THIS COUNTY. IN JESUS'S NAME, WE PRAY. AMEN."
Flash the flag, please.
(APPLAUSE). "THE UNITED STATES OF AMERICA AND TO THE REPUBLIC WHICH STANDS, ONE NATION UNDER GOD, INDIVisible, WITH LIBERTY AND JUSTICE FOR ALL."
At this time, I'll ask if anyone has a conflict of interest they would like to disclose before the meeting's started.
I may disclose a conflict as the meeting progresses. I don't know yet.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have a conflict? All right, we're down to item number D, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda soon?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
For items for discussion, I'd like to move something.
All right.
From, let's see, page 153.
That's item number two.
Item number two, it starts-
Under items for discussion.
Yeah, it starts with requirements, first read of July 2017. This is not an ordinance, it's a discussion paper intended, if the board puts together a committee of three, to look at the current county ordinance, that this could be the beginning document to start the discussion only. I'd like to move that to, it's 18 pages, I'd like to move it to items for decision in number eight.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I object to that. It was put on as a discussion item, that's what the commissioners have prepared for. The decision item is when the committee will be appointed to consider the ordinance. We're not here tonight to consider the ordinance.
And I don't disagree with Commissioner Richardson. It's, number eight under items for decision, we're only voting on whether we'll set up a committee or not, but if he prefers to leave it there, I have no issue with that.
All right.
I just wanted to straighten it out, clarify that that draft document was not an ordinance and was not written by the planning committee.
Okay. Since item number two is items for discussion, we will stick with the present agenda. Any other change in the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, a second by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thought it was unanimous. We're down to the public comment. Before we start the public comment, for those who are here for the first time, you're allowed to speak in three minutes. At the end of three minutes, I'll gavel you down. We have 10 people, and the maximum amount of time that we allocate for public comment is 30 minutes. So just listen for the gavel, and since we've got a full crew, I ask that you be kind enough to go ahead and sit down. Our first one is Rosie Lilly.
Hello. Want to start with, I have a question. I know you're charged with doing what is best for Beaufort County, and I know there's seven of you out there, but Frankie, maybe you can address it, because I don't understand. So it's a very sincere question. If this is not what is best for Beaufort County, can you, seven fellows, say no and stop? Do you have the authority to do that, or is that not-
During the public comment, there is no interaction. Now, we're going to have discussion later on, and we can address that. But during the public comment, there is no back and forth, so-
Okay, all right. At some, at later date, I'd like to ask that of everybody, and hopefully somebody has an answer. I'm a Realtor, I've sold real estate here for 26 years, and my family, I'm from Beaufort County, my parents are from Beaufort County, grandparents, we've been here for a long, long time. And, you know, I know Washington is never going to be Raleigh, you know, we're not going to have a bunch of jobs like Research Triangle Park or something like that, but when people come to Washington or Beaufort County, they're coming here because they like our community. You know, they like what we have to offer, a small town, a rural town, a town that, you know, got a lot of beauty with the Pamlico River and the beautiful farms, not to come to somewhere that looks like a wasteland for solar farms. And I'm afraid it's going to grow into that if we don't get some kind of grip on it. Another concern I have is when we're trying to sell property and have people come to our area, it seems like the hospital has a hard time getting doctors who want to move here. And part of their reason sometime when they don't choose us is because we're very limited in what we can offer their family and their children as far as education. I picked Terracya Christian School a few years ago because I had a granddaughter who was in another facility, and it just seemed like she wasn't learning anything. And, you know, being able to offer quality education is huge. And, you know, if you don't have that to offer people, they're not going to want to come here. And I just, you know, my hat's off to Terracya, it's off to those teachers out there, all the children really look forward to going to school, they're happy to be there. She made huge progress in a very short amount of time. So I don't think we want to lose Terracya Christian School. And if we end up with a 600-acre solar farm surrounded by, I can't imagine anybody wants to be there. And then my other concern is 20 years from now, when that's, you know, an era gone by, all that stuff left out there, what's it going to be? Who's going to clean it up? What's their environmental concerns? And I'm sure that even if you create a moratorium, at least we can get some answer to these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next one is Donna Lee.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the Citizens for Better Government is requesting this Board, as soon as possible, declare a moratorium on commercial solar farm installations anywhere in Beaufort County until the existing solar farm ordinance can be reviewed and possibly amended. Prior to the amended solar ordinance being developed, the Beaufort County Planning Board should not issue any permits or approvals for commercial solar installations. NCGS 153A 340H allows local governments to implement a moratorium on any county development approval required by law. Citizens have come before this Board pleading with you to exercise the ordinance, make an authority codified in the North Carolina general statutes to limit or stop the encroachment of a solar farm in Terracya that would, without a doubt, cause a great deal of financial harm to the Terracya Christian School. Although a solar farm installation may not present an immediate hazard to the people, public perceptions of such a hazard are real. The longer-term issue is abandonment and site cleanup after many years of operation. Currently, the county's solar ordinance requires the operator or landowner to demolish and dispose of the collector panels at the end of their useful life. That is not adequate. Does anybody know where and how to dispose of these devices? Does anybody know what the cost of this site cleanup and disposal will be 20 years from now? It has been reported that solar collectors contain varying amounts of hazardous chemicals which require specialized handling to prevent contamination of soil and water. We suggest the county have John Droce update his presentation on solar energy production that was made to this Board some time ago, and to consider his recommendations as the new ordinance is developed. We have reviewed the agenda materials for tonight's meeting and are very encouraged by the draft of a new ordinance, but it only makes common sense, then, to declare a moratorium until this is studied and possibly some version thereof adopted. We do encourage you to seek and facilitate public participation in this process. We offer the CBG's assistance in this process. Again, until the solar ordinance is amended, to protect all citizens now and in the future, we ask that no permits be issued by the Planning Board for commercial solar installations. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Davis, will Jerry, will you open the door and see if Derek Davis is out there? Okay, the next one on here is Matt Hansman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matthew Hansman, I'm the CEO of Hexagon Energy. We're a renewable energy development company based in Charlottesville, Virginia, and our team has been together for quite some time, and over that period of time, we've developed close to 9,000 megawatts of both solar and wind projects throughout the country. So we're very familiar with local issues like this and are as concerned as local residents and commissioners are with getting the right balance. And I wanted to start my comments by thanking the commissioners. I know there's a tough job balancing landowner rights, economic development, and the public safety, and we recognize that that's a real issue that has to be tackled here and certainly support that effort. By way of background of the solar project that we're working on, it's called the Bay Branch Solar Facility. It's based about three miles south of Chalkwindy, east of Highway 17. It's going to be a five-megawatt facility located on approximately 35 acres of land. It's sited on a property that's currently used for timbering and hunting that's owned by Vicki Dodson. And the timeline for this project and why we speak tonight is that the project is very mature, and it was our anticipation barring these proceedings and things that might come from these proceedings, to begin construction of this project in the fourth quarter of this year. We've received our CPCN from the state last year in about April, we've received our federal energy renewable, or Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approval in May of last year. We have a legally enforceable obligation to sell the power to Duke that we received earlier this year, and we just completed our advanced system study with Duke Energy for interconnecting the project. So the project is ready to go, it's ready for construction. And during the whole development process, we have paid particular attention to the solar ordinance and the siding requirements. So the project itself, we believe, is well-sited in light of those solar energy ordinances. Right now, the current design has it set back 1,000 feet from Highway 17. The entire project will be screened, basically 360 degrees around, by about 100 feet of natural vegetation that will remain in place for the site. And the project itself is set back at least 600 feet from the closest residents in that area. So we believe that safety and siding have been addressed very well with this particular project, and believe that the project should be allowed to go forward. We recognize that the commissioners are going to have to entertain a notion of a moratorium, and believe that a moratorium on a countywide basis is, has the adverse potential to pick up projects like ours that may be inadvertently caught up in issues that are being addressed for other types of projects. So ask you to basically address revisions of the current ordinances, but not put any type of moratorium in place. But recognizing that there could be momentum for a moratorium, we would ask that the commissioners basically reserve the right-
I'm sorry.
That's quite a right.
Sorry.
Yes, the commissioners to reserve the right to make exceptions to that moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next one is April Montgomery.
Thank you very much. April Montgomery, I'm here on behalf of Wilkinson Solar. I'd like to thank the commission for your continued work and consideration of all sides of the Wilkinson Solar Project. Wilkinson remains dedicated to finding reasonable compromises with interested parties, both those that oppose the project and those that support it, and we're in active conversations to that end. Enacting a moratorium may limit our ability to continue those conversations, binding us to the site plan as approved by the county. Redesigning the project to provide additional setbacks, landscaping, and other mitigation options may require amendments to our site plan. We'd like to maintain our ability to continue to make these compromises with neighbors and landowners, and ask that you give us more time to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next one is William Westcott.
I was under the, right, I was under number two of items of discussion, was it four?
No, he's not.
Okay.
He's not speaking now. He's going to speak in the three.
Okay, okay. Our next one is Beth Foster.
My name is Beth Foster. I live in Washington County, however, I do own property here in Beaufort County. Two out of my three children attend Terracya Christian School. I'm addressing you this evening on behalf of my opposition to the proposed solar facility that's to be built in the Terracya community of Beaufort County. Over the past few months, since I have become aware of this proposed solar facility, I began to do a little research, just because I travel the state a lot, and I see solar facilities coming up in various places. And I have read both the pros and the cons of solar power. However, I am opposed to the solar facility being constructed in the Terracya community for the following reasons. I feel like it's detrimental to the continued operation of the school. That is such a big asset to Terracya and the surrounding communities such as myself. I don't live directly in Terracya, but my children, we do travel there to go to school. And I'm concerned on many levels on how green that solar energy really is in the long run and the short term. It's my understanding that a lot of this energy that is produced off this facility will not stay in the area or potentially even in the state, and so it won't benefit the North Carolina residents. Also, the little bit of safety concern with the high-voltage facility being right there adjacent to the school concerns me as a parent, and the negative impacts surrounding landowners and their land values. I also have been doing some research on county government and the duties and responsibilities of county commissioners. I have the utmost respect for county commissioners. My father-in-law was a county commissioner for a long time in the western part of the state, so I know how tough your jobs are. So anyway, I, but much of your duties are executive and legislative, however, you have jobs as far as budgeting, appropriating funds for all county activities, building and maintenance of roads, making and enforcing civil and criminal resolutions and ordinances that do not conflict with state law, including those for land use and building construction. Executive oversight of all appointed county agencies, construction and maintenance of public buildings, fixing tax levies for the county, authorizing payments owed by the county, and auditing all officers having control of county monies. Managing county property and county funds, and prosecuting and defending all actions for and against your county. Commissioners are authorized and required to make policy for their county, meaning defining county goals and long-range outcomes. County policies have an impact on the lives of their citizens. And those citizens entrust their county commissioners to make the best decisions for the county and implement the best policies for their residents. In other words, to take care of their people within the county. This public meeting-
Time.
Will I ask you tonight to please exercise the option to implement the moratorium? Please to help us with Terracya Christian School. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Henry, I'm sorry, I apologize, I skipped you.
That's okay, I'll see you back down.
Okay. All right, William Jefferson.
William Jefferson, on behalf of the Terracya School Board, I've been asked to come and anybody in this room could read everything I've written right down, you've heard it 100 times, you know while we're here. We were seeking a moratorium to allow us to have more time for the negotiations, so that there can be some concessions made. Hopefully, we can come up with some agreeance with you guys to do whatever you need to do to move forward with the project, however you, however, it's got to be done. I don't know, you know, I don't know. Utilities Commission says that you guys are the only ones who can do anything about it. You guys say that you can't do anything about it. I know how to fix it. I don't know how solar energy works, I'm not so concerned about what happens 20 years from now. I am concerned that the most valuable farmland in the eastern part of the state is being ruined. If farming is so important that we give millions of dollars to support farmers so that they can continue to grow crops, and then we turn around and take their farms and shut them down and cut them up solar panels, I mean, just, where's the common sense in that? We got dead land over on the other side of Aurora. Wrap it up with solar panels. I believe we need, we need this solar technology to, we need, and it needs advancement, it needs to be worked on so that it can get better and it'll be important to us. At this point in time, we're simply asking for a moratorium so that we can have more time for the negotiations and that the ordinance be revisited and rewritten.
Thank you very much. Jerry Sawyer.
I was approached by the solar panels, and I wasn't really too in favor of it until one day I went to Pan Tigger's Punggah Machine Shop to get something. And on the way back, I looked at the farm at the end of Terracya Road, and I said, "Most of my landowners are absentee, out of state." And I was thinking, you know, all the farms I rent is under this power line. If those people rent to the solar farm, they can get $25,000 more a year than what any farmer can afford to pay. And as I went up the road, I said, "Those absentee owners can get this, those absentee owners can get that." And without question, Terracya is one of the finest schools around, I can promise you. But fears of what may be or may not be is one thing. We are a small farm. My brother, my sister, and my mother signed up for that. The land we have in Terracya around us is some of the most fertile land there is around, but our farm is not. Before my time, the topsoil was sold. And as an agriculture banker, you've had small farmers come in that you've had to turn down that didn't get a loan. And there's a lot of small farmers out there that need every break they can get. And as a small farm goes out, then what happens to the community? All these pretty farms that people want to see, Realtor comes in, he's got it, he sells it, you got a housing development, you got this, you got that, you got trailer parts, you got whatever. So if I were to fall on hard times as a small farmer, I'd like to see a show of hands of the people in here that would come to my aid to bail me out. Nobody? So, nobody wants to help me, but everybody wants to take something from me. As a small farmer, I'm asking you to, let's work this thing out, let's come to an agreement. Now, this Wilkinson Farm, the ship has done sail. The contracts have been signed, the money's been put in the bank. So what's going to happen if there's a moratorium on it where it's not allowed to go through? Who's going to reimburse what? Is the commissioners going to commit it? No. You going to let the county do it? No. They going to do it? No. We just act. So I'm asking you to give us a lot of consideration, and I will say that my experience with this solar farm project, they came out and they asked us what we would be willing to do, what we could do, and we said, "No, we don't want it here, we don't want it there." Well, fine, we'll move it back there, will that work? Yeah, they've been very easy to work with. That's been my experience, I can't speak for somebody else. So I want you to take all that in consideration, and don't take something forever away from the small farmer that needs every break he can get. Not every farmer's got thousands of acres, the latest equipment, and all that. There's a lot of us that need all the breaks we can get. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, we get back to the agenda. The item number F is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, to go into the public hearing, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner-
This is a public hearing for what?
This is for the legislative session law updates on the subdivisions.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Mr. Williams, did we do all ten?
We, our time has passed.
Okay, so we have to stop?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there, all those in favors, raise your right hand. Okay. All right. At this time, I'll turn it over to Seth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, other Board members, I'm sorry if I'm-
If you will wait just a minute until we can get this back door closed.
Thank you very much. This is the follow-up item from our July 5 meeting, where I educated the Board about legislative updates for this year from the state of North Carolina lawmakers. It's included two items that'll affect Beaufort County. One was a new category of exempt subdivisions, and the other was an expedited review option for qualifying subdivisions greater than five acres, which we went over last month. You recall, we directed staff to advertise a public hearing as required by the statutes and advertise, and it was ran in the Washington Daily News on July 10th and 17th. So now we'd entertain comments from the public if anybody had anything to say, or I'll certainly answer any questions y'all may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Ah, yes.
I have one edit, if I may. At the end of item number five, it says, "In compliance with the Beaufort County subdivision," I think ordinance should be added after subdivision.
What page are you on?
Page six.
Page six, okay. You're saying substitute?
No, at the very end of item five on page six. If you read it, it says, "In compliance with the Beaufort County subdivision." The Beaufort County subdivision what?
Okay.
That's a nonsensical statement.
The word ordinance is left off the end of that sentence.
Okay, all right.
I thought it was just in the edit.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Any citizen here to make a public comment on the subdivision changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. If not, well, we entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brin. Is there a second, second by Commissioner Busio? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Unanimous. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance that's recommended.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Busio, seconds. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. That was unanimous, K D, which means that it goes into effect...
Now.
Now. All right. Thank you, Seth. All right, we're down to the approval of the items for consent. Is there any item on the, out of the 16 that you would like to remove?
Make a motion to approve the consent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove, if I may...
Yes.
Item number five on the U.S. Cellular Services Agreement...
Okay.
For some discussion.
All right. Anyone else have any item? We entertain a motion to approve the items for consent by taking out item number five for further discussion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. All those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote was six to one. All right, we're down to item number H, items for presentation. The first one is the Boys and Girls Club. Joel is...
Is it, might be in the lobby.
Joel, if you'll step up there and can you pull that mic down?
Right here.
All right.
Good evening.
Do you want to come stand with your grandson?
Just to do.
Are you a proud grandmother?
My name is Jawel Gardner, and I am a rising ninth grader at Washington High School, and I am a proud junior citizen of Beaufort County, also a 4A student. My future plans are to join United States Navy and to become a doctor. And I am here today to ask a question. What if? What if there was a place in the afternoon where kids can go and get help with homework and science projects? What if there was a place to learn how to become a productive citizen and also to respect and appreciate people from all walks of life? A place where kids are taught about healthy lifestyles, growing gardens and eating healthy, exposure to different sports and healthy competition, exercising, and being responsible for your personal health? Thanks to the caring citizens of Beaufort County and our awesome county commissioners, this is not a what if for me, it's reality. All of these things can be found at our local Boys and Girls Club. I hope Beaufort County citizens and our county commissioners will continue to support our club. Thanks for your time and dedication in serving the youth of Beaufort County. Again, thanks, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much. You did a great job. Okay, item number two is the Terraceya Community. Jennifer...
Please ask Jennifer to step in.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And if you will, you told me you've got three people speaking. If you'll get all three of them in here. And there's a time limit of 15 minutes on the presentation, so at the end of, I don't care how you share the time, but at the end of 15 minutes, I'll let you know.
Let us know when you want to start.
You can start right now.
March 13th, two thousand, first I'm William Westcott, Westcott Environmental Services, here on behalf of the citizens of Terraceya Community. March 13th, 2017, Wilkinson Solar LLC applied for, submitted an application for registration as a new renewable energy facility. On page two of that document, and I quote, "The applicant certifies that it is in substantial compliance with all federal, state laws, regulations, and rules for the protection of the environment and conservation of natural resources." Page four of the application, and I quote, "Wilkinson has consulted with the U.S. Fish Wildlife Service and the Army Corps of Engineers about environmentally sensitive areas within or near the project boundary. The project is designed to minimize environmental impacts." Well, so far, this company sounds like a good company to work with, but the rest of the story is much different. Wilkinson Solar LLC states in their application, "They have consulted with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers about environmentally sensitive areas." The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers office here in Washington has no such record of that consultation. The state and federal agencies responsible for reviewing and processing permits for this proposed project are right here in Washington. Has this solar company or their consultant held or requested an interagency meeting to discuss this project? I have found no such records that they have. Wilkinson Solar LLC has not done a wetland determination or jurisdictional determination, so how can they claim to have designed this project to minimize environmental impacts? The following applications, which they'll be required to go through, specifically require environmental and wetland sensitive areas to be identified. The 401 Water Quality Certification, the Erosion and Sediment Control Certificate, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Permits, and Stormwater Management Permit. Even Kimbley Horn, their environmental consultant, recommended a wetland and stream delineation prior to the civil design of this project. So far, the wetland and stream delineation has not been done, but Wilkinson, the solar company, has moved forward with designing the project. Several of you may be wondering, what environmental issues could possibly be out there since there's mostly farm fields? This whole area is the headwaters of Broad Creek, which flows to Bellhaven. In fact, the natural creek valley can be seen in the Beaufort County Soil Survey, in the USGS Topographic Maps, in LiDAR imagery, in aerial photography, and with visual inspection when the crops aren't there. There may still be wetlands in this natural valley in the farm fields. There are thousands of linear feet of blue line streams or modified stream channels within the project boundaries. These channels will have tar pambico buffers associated with them. The project has been designed to place solar panels across many of the blue line ditches. My preliminary review of the site reveal that there is potential, potentially flooding of residential community along Lovick Lane. And that, and that situation should be closely examined. The reason this potential flooding scenario should be considered is that the main collector ditch behind Terraceya School coming down through that middle of that farm field is identified as a blue line stream, and it's large enough, it's not a simple field ditch you jump across. It's large enough you can drop a pickup truck in and bury it. This ditch carries a tremendous amount of stormwater, not only from the proposed solar site, but from the surrounding farmland. The proposed site layout submitted by Wilkinson Solar LLC to the Utilities Commission shows solar panels over this main collector ditch. It is unclear at this time whether the ditch will be filled in or if panels will span the ditch. Even if the ditch is not filled in, this project will make it very difficult to maintain that collector ditch. This means the water currently flowing through this ditch will have to be redirected to another ditch, and that other ditch leads straight to the residential community of Lovick Lane. That ditch network and that residential community will not, likely not be able to handle the volume of water that may come to them. Another important issue to consider is the condition of the land after the solar site is decommissioned. Now, I will limit my comments to wetlands and wetland regulations. If wetlands are reestablished after, as a result of this 20-year agreement, then the landowners will be left with land that may not be able to put back into farmland without going through an extensive environmental review and regulatory procedures. I have already confirmed that scenario with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. The words of Wilkinson Solar LLC indicate they will do the right thing, but their actions so far indicate they are deceptive, uncooperative, and untrustworthy. On behalf of the Terraceya Community, I request Beaufort County Commissioners stand firm and be the shield and protector that this community needs. On behalf of the Terraceya Community, I request that Beaufort County withhold any and all permits under their control for this project, and that the county establish a moratorium on solar farm sites. Thank you.
I want to thank the commissioners for inviting us to speak. My name is Ken Lys. I moved here in 1984 to become the administrator of Terraceya Christian, and 28 years later, they found enough reason for me to retire and for me to pursue my dream of appearing on ESPN on some golf course. That has not happened yet. But I'm here to speak, and I'm a bit more encouraged tonight than what I have been because of the talk of moratorium, and because I think that's the route we should go. I do not have objective statistics to speak about, but I have a very important subjective to talk about, and that is children. You know, the misconception of Christian schools by some people is that these little kids come with halos, and they spend the whole day praying and singing hymns. That is not true. They're kids, and they're inquisitive, and you know what? They see something on the field next door, and they're gonna go check it out. I can't tell you, all the kids I've caught in the cornfields, looking for balls, messing around, playing hide and seek, and you know, these things happen with kids. And so this whole project is compounded by that. You know, it's not a, it's not one person's residence that we're dealing with. We're dealing with kids, and I just hope that, you know, in your discussions, you remember that. And you know, I know that everyone here loves them. I just found out that I'm sitting next to the director of the company who's putting in the solar. I'm sure she loves kids, okay? But sometimes, they're forgotten in, because we're following what the rules or what our jobs tell us we must do. Okay? And so, in my experience, as limited as it is, there is one thing that I have found never to be true, and that is the comment, "We can do nothing about it." I believe that something always can be, something can be done, especially when there's the potential of harm. I'm not saying that there will be harm, but I am saying there is potential. And I believe I would get unanimous consent here. I don't think there's enough study been done. Even though I'm not active in the school anymore, and I don't meet with the board and that, I've heard of very little negotiation, very little willingness to compromise. And so I just encourage you as commissioners to put in a process in which these parents, you, these people here, can be comfortable by knowing that everything that was humanly possible was done to make sure that this project succeeded, but also that it was safe for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Sebastian Reddick. I'm here from the Delta City Community Association. I'm the president of Delta City Community Organization, and we have great concerns about the solar farm.
Could you stand a little closer to the mic, please?
You could, if you'd like to, just pull that down a little bit closer.
The number one concern is drainage. We already have a drainage problem. The least little thunderstorm come, and our community look like a lake already. We've been trying to get the ditches cleaned out, and they run us from everywhere. We just had DOT, the railroad, come out and look at the ditches. They say, "Yeah, you got a problem. We got to find out who the ditches belong to." And on top of that, we're hearing that the solar farm are gonna fill in the ditches and reroute the water. If we're already flooding, and water coming down from that farming, I got pictures of the farm, when it rained, it looked like a lake out there. From Lovick Lane, always just about to the meat farm. If they redirect all that water, we're gonna flood clean out. We have some residents losing property now. Y'all know about our concern, because I've been talking to Commissioner Booth and Commissioner Langley, other people I've talked to, Commissioner Langley. The other concern is the batteries for this solar farm. My understanding there'd be over an acre of batteries. I was told that. We all know batteries have to breathe. Anytime a battery breathes, it put off dangerous chemicals. An acre of batteries around the school with kids playing there eight hours a day, it depends on which way the wind blow, gonna be a problem. The other thing is the railroad. The railroad told us that 100 feet from the railroad in each direction is their property, but they refuse to fill, clean out the ditches. And we flooding already, so we need help on that end. If these batteries are put next to Lovick Lane, and as we all know, anything closed up, got the vent some kind of way, it gonna build up pressure and blow up. If this gases come out of these batteries, come over Delta City way, we have a environmental problem, plus an air quality problem. And I wonder, has there ever been any kind of study on the air quality problem around these batteries? And just imagine your kid at that school for six to eight hours a day. Those batteries started pumping out these chemicals. These chemicals are coming over to the school. What your kid breathing? What's the long-range effect? We all know what the long-range effect is. Is money gonna outweigh the safety of your children? And we also, in Delta City, if they dump all this water into Delta City, we're gonna lose property. Several gentleman has already lost their vehicles. It's a house up there now about to flood out in the blocks. So we cannot stand this water if this water is rerouted. So all I'm asking you is take these things in consideration, especially take the kids into consideration, and also Delta City, because we can't stand this water. I have been run from drainage and soil, I've been run to the railroad, I have been run to DOT. Nobody can give me a straight answer. So just, I appreciate it, just take this into consideration and your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, does any commissioner have a question or comment, either one?
I got one question.
Okay, Commissioner.
Can you step up to the mic? You said that you had gone out and tried to find information where that project has been inspected and studies have been done, and they said they had talked to the Army Corps of Engineers, is that correct?
The company in their documents said they had consulted with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
But you can't find any documentation?
I've talked personally with the Corps of Engineers reps, and they said they have no documentation that this company's ever consulted with the Corps here in the local office, which is the office that would be doing the processing of the permit.
Right. Okay. One question, maybe you know, maybe you know. These blue line ditches that you have, I don't think they can be filled in without the first going to Corps of Engineers to give permission to do it.
Well, the state, the state...
Well, state, there would be a state regulation.
You're going to have two agencies involved. US Army Corps of Engineers, because it may consider waters of the US, and the state, because it may consider waters of the state. In addition to the blue lines and the waters, there are also going to be buffers associated with those ditches.
I'll be honest with you, I'm more concerned about wrapping those blue line ditches up than anything else. Because I know what that gentleman there, like there said is the truth, because I've been down there.
And if these have buffers on them, then there's got, it's supposed to be a 50-foot on either side of that ditch, and these panels are all the way across the ditch with no consideration whatsoever of the buffers.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Okay, Commissioner.
Clarify the issue on, we get into this blue line, trying to put it back into farmland?
If, let's just say, if this site has been a solar site right now, and they were in the process of decommissioning this site, if over 20 years, some of this farmland has reverted back to being wetlands jurisdictional by the US Army Corps of Engineers, then it has to, they, these landowners will have to go back through the environmental review process in order to put this land back into farmland, or to use it for any other thing except for trees. So then you're taking perfectly good farmland and potentially reverting it back into a wetland because you're not maintaining ditches, you're not taking care of the runoff, and if it reverts back into wetlands, then all the environmental regulations are going to come down on it.
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am. Any, anyone else?
Who said that they was going to cover up those ditches? We hadn't heard that.
Well, they have, what they have shown on their plan is the plant, the panels go all the way across the ditches. They hasn't, as I said, it doesn't say one way or the other if they're going to fill them in. But even if they don't fill them in, how are you going to get to them to maintain them? So over 20 years, they're going to eventually fill in with debris and sediment.
And Mr. Reddick is correct. He has been having problems with those ditches, and everywhere he goes is a dead end.
Right.
And I don't think none of these commissioners are going to sit here and allow them to turn that water on to Delta City.
But it is a tremendous amount of water that comes down through that center, that center collector that comes toward the railroad, where the water will go 66. I was standing in the bottom of that main collector ditch, it's over my head.
Well, I grew up down there, and I know exactly where it is. But I can assure you today that this commission will not vote to close none of those ditches and turn water on Delta City. I assure you that.
Any, any other?
There is one thing I'd like to say, one more thing. Before we make a decision on this, I want to find out what they're going to do with the blue line ditches. I want to find out exactly whether they're going to fill them in, how the panels are going to affect these ditches, whether it's going to slow the water down, whether it's going to speed it up or what.
At this point, they don't know what permits they need. If there are wetlands still out there, or if they're having a large number of linear feet of ditches that they're going to impact, then they're going to have to go through a permitting process. And at this moment, they haven't identified what's there, so they don't even know what permit process they have to go through. If they have to go through an individual permit with the Corps of Engineers or standard permit, then not only are they going to have to evaluate the alternative designs on the site, but they will also have to evaluate alternative sites. So to me, it seemed like you would want to know what kind of environmental regulations you're going to have to deal with before you even got this far.
Thank you.
Okay. We're down to item number three, the training exercise at the Voice of America site. Jason?
Good evening. My name is Ron Jones. I'm the exercise director for Expeditionary Operations Training Group at Campbell June, North Carolina. Like I said, I've come here to discuss, provide you all the wave top details of the exercise that's going to take place 16, 17, and 18 August at the Voice of America site. I've got a PowerPoint brief, but I'd rather not kill you all with that. I'd rather just skip and give you the details first and then answer any questions you've got. First of all, the reason we have to train off base, it goes back to, it goes back to the 1980s when there were no urban training sites on any kind of military installation, and we thought we were going to fight the next war against the Russians and Eastern Europe. So we started looking at how to train off base. So that led us to training off base with, facilitated by the FBI. We had an FBI agent on our staff who would actually go out and find these training sites for us, and he would coordinate the usage of them. Over the years, that process transition from FBI to NCIS what it is now, same thing, they still go out and find training sites for us. It's part of an exercise called Realistic Urban Training Exercise. It takes place regularly for every Marine Expeditionary Unit that deploys out of Campbell June. So any given year, we may have one exercise or two exercises. The exercise lasts about three weeks, consists of, this exercise goes back to 1985. Since then, we've trained in over 15 states, and I would say just a ballpark of about 75 different municipalities, ranging in size from large cities, which that used to be the case. Now, what's happened is in Iraq and Afghanistan, we're not so much fighting in large cities, we're fighting in small urban and suburban terrain. So what we've done is we've transitioned to smaller sites, and what this does is it gives us a lot more latitude. The bigger cities don't afford as much freedom of movement. It's very much postage stamp little sites that we typically use. So now that we've moved off into suburban and rural areas, we're able to get a lot larger areas with a lot more green space or maneuver space. Like I said, this exercise called Realistic Urban Training Exercise is for the 26 Marine Expeditionary Unit. So they will deploy in February of next year. So this is part of their regularly scheduled training. It's nothing special. Like I said, we've been doing it for years. The unit that we're training is commanded by a Colonel, about 2,500 Marines and sailors. That's not going to be what's here, really what's going to take place. It's a microcosm, I guess if you'd say it. The command element, about 200 people will be in Campbell June. And what's going to happen is they will integrate with their organization called the Maritime Raid Force. So what we've got is, over a period of three weeks, we've got three amphibious raids. So they will attack at a site and have actions on the objective, engage our role players with paintball type weapons, and then extract. The event itself, any given time, anybody, please break in if you have any questions. Two of the most essential tasks that the MUE has to display proficiency in is amphibious raids and also maritime interdiction. So that's another piece. We're not going to do it here, but obviously it's going to take place down the coast further off Campbell June, involving a Navy training support vessel. The exercise itself, what y'all really care about is, has been going on since, the coordination for it has been going on since October of last year. Special Agent Betis' predecessor started coordinating this, and then turned it over to Special Agent Betis to finish it out when he went back to NCIS. So once again, three raids. The first one will be up in Bladen County, second one will be Kinston, and the third one will be here. The raid itself, what it consists of is, we will occupy the site, we'll put our own people in charge of it, typically a gun range sergeant and a staff sergeant for the first couple of days. We'll put about 40 role players. They're all Marines, they're dressed up in Middle Eastern attire, things of that nature. They'll occupy the site on day one, and then on the night of day one, they'll, the MUE, the people we're training, will insert a reconnaissance team, about six to 12 Marines. In this case, they'll insert by vehicle, the warehouse of property, conduct a foot movement through the woods, and observe for, that'll be Saturday and Sunday. And then on Monday, they'll actually execute the raid. So those reconnaissance Marines are actually observing those role players' actions and reporting back to Campbell June. So the MUE commander, the Colonel, can make an educated decision on, yes, I deem this as being whatever this site is going to be. It may be a weapons transshipment site, it could be a command and controlled, you know, headquarters facility, could be a location of a kidnapped or a downed pilot. So on that third day, the MUE commander will have enough information to say, yes, execute. Execution, what's going to consist of, most likely via aircraft. There may be vehicles, but I doubt, because of the distance involved from Campbell June to here, I doubt they will do that. We, it's about a two-hour drive with a regular vehicle. By tactical vehicles, it will be a very lengthy movement. If they do choose to use vehicles, what they will most likely do is, we've already contracted the National Guard Armory, they can roll from Campbell June to here, to there, stage, take a rest break, and then move on to the objective at Voice of America site. If they choose to execute by aircraft, it'll be most likely via Ospreys, and like I said, you've seen them flying around enough, no big surprise really there. They will land, it'll be roughly a rifle company, about 120 Marines, enter the building, they'll engage all those role players with the paintball type weapons, and then they'll, they're all going to die in place. And then we will, we'll actually tag, we'll actually, they will actually, as we're training, we'll actually incur some casualties. So what we're going to do is assess casualties on some of our Marines to see how well they extract those casualties.
I got a question.
I think Commissioner Booth has a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand these casualties are going to be dummy casualties, but have y'all notified the people in that community, because when they hear all of that action out there, this our phone is going to ring off the hook.
Yes, sir, we have. We've gone door-to-door in a lot of areas, we've left flyers just so they know that there is training exercise. I personally spoke to some of the residents out there. They have a number that they can call if they have any kind of complaints with us. Sheriff's Office is aware, we'll have two sheriff's office deputies out there. There'll be fire truck, EMS on scene in case there's some problems. So, yeah, we're prepared.
Well, I understand we can't stop it, but I just want to make, I want to make sure that the residents out there knew that it was a training exercise and not a real thing, especially when you see people walking around and running all over everywhere.
That should be pretty much away from what they can really see.
Okay.
But in the event that they hear the aircraft and they-
We hear the aircraft now, we hear the Osprey every, whatever y'all hear.
But they'll hear it and not see it, because they won't have their lights on.
Okay.
So it's going to be a little different than what you typically see, but we are prepared. We have notified all the residents door-to-door.
That's all.
Do, do they know the exact date, or is that?
They know the timeframe.
The timeframe, okay.
And the reason, and the reason we don't advertise the exact, the exact dates or locations typically is because at most of sites, we will invite some people to watch, but in this, if we can't, if it's in a controlled environment. If we're going to invite someone to watch, it has to, we have to offer them something to see of value, but it has to be out of the, out of the way of the exercise force. All the rest of sites are usually okay. This has probably been the worst one where if, in order to see anything, you have to be really close, and then you're going to be right in the way, and it's going to be, there's rotor wash, the aircraft coming in, it's not very pleasant for people to be around to watch. At site, you've got snakes, you've got fire ants, you've got differentials in the ground, so you've got ditches and trenches, things like that. It just was not a good idea to invite anybody there. So we don't advertise it, because we don't want people showing up, because we're going to have law enforcement out there, hey, just a couple of police cars. If too many people show up, the problem is now they've got a crowd on their hands, and it may be in the wrong spot where it's going to, it's going to interfere a lot of things.
Safety issue.
Safety.
Like I said, I've got a lot more things I could brief, but I would rather just field any questions from y'all. I don't want to kill you with information.
So what you're saying is, my grandson, who wants to be a Marine, and he's six years old, I can't take him out there to see this exercise.
Well, we do have other sites if you were willing to travel.
He's still a little bit young. He's still a little bit young. We'll wait.
We've got some good sites, that could happen, but you'd have to travel, sir, I'm sorry.
Is there any other questions?
No, yes, there's a lot.
Mr. Wars, keep encouraging them.
I will. I'm interested in your type in. Is that a Texas?
Yes, sir.
My son is at Shepherd Air Force Base.
Very good.
Texas, he's a lieutenant colonel and a pilot.
I had this made from a silversmith up in Brooklyn, so I don't advertise that very often.
My daughter's from Brooklyn now.
Anyway, thank you for your service, and we look forward to the exercise because we want you to be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, down to item number four, the renovation of Financial Services Update. Christina?
As he's working with that, I'll start. Gentleman that's working to my left is Prokofio Serrano. He's the architect architect with the East Group, which is an architectural and engineering firm that we contracted with to do the design of the renovation of the First Bank Building. This is something we spoke about numerous times in the past few months. Staff met with the designers at the East Group also numerous times, fought through some different scenarios, went through the East Group, also prepared a preliminary estimate, which I presented to you. And based upon that preliminary estimate, the vote was taken for us to move forward with the renovation project, which is where we are tonight. What we'd like to do today is just to give you a very short update and show you what was decided upon. I have in my hands the 95% complete design documents that staff is now currently reviewing. Once we complete this review and we give the information back to the East Group within a few weeks, they will be able to revise, sorry, revise the documents, and then we will be able to send the documents out, complete a, complete bid package, and send the documents out to the local contractors to obtain pricing. Mr. Serrano has spoken with contractors, they are aware of the project, they are interested in doing the project. Also, based upon some of the other projects in the area that will be ramping up, we're hoping sending them out for bid in the fall of the year, and then with construction beginning in the winter part, we're hoping that will be advantageous for us as far as pricing, hoping it'll come back a little bit lower. As you can see, what he's pulled up here is an overall view of the property. Located at the top of the screen will be the commissioner's room, and then located behind that are existing offices. So we're not looking, again, we tried to minimize the, yes.
Mr. Rodman, getting the lights over there.
We tried to minimize the amount of demolition that would need to be placed. Then located at the lower portion of the screen is the area that most would be familiar with as the teller area, because again, this was a big building, so this would be the area that would be utilized by the financial customer service representatives would be there, so they would be able to take funds from citizens, water department bills, utility bills, that type of thing. Again, this is just an overall layout. Mr. Serrano can also walk us through, are you able to pull that up?
Yeah, do you want to start with the, so let's, we're just going to quickly look at the financial services area down here and see what, you can see there, again, this is the old vault, old bank vault here, and we're reworking this area here to facilitate taking payments and just have the interaction between the public and being able to go and take care of business on a day-to-day basis. We're also, as a part of this plan, adding a couple offices, and, but for the most part, most of the work here is really to improve sort of the existing teller area here to take payments.
Also making it ADA compliant.
Yes. We have to make sure that all those counters, somebody with either a disability, everybody always thinks about ADA is a wheelchair, that's not always the case. Somebody may have walking issues or sight issues, hearing issues, all those things, so we have to take that into consideration when we design these.
Is that a workable drive-through? Is it going to be a drive-through there?
The drive-through will remain but be altered. What we're doing is we're closing in the existing, where the window is currently, and we will be relocating that further down so that we will be able to house at least two vehicles in the queue before they go out into the street.
So as you can see here, there's an existing window here, and we're relocating it to here. The, we still have the ability to take night deposits, if somebody wants to drop off a payment, you still have the ability to do that. You also still have the ability to drive up and go to the window and interact with the teller as well. So- So benefiting from this being a bank, we have that as a, as a nice amenity that we have a drive, a drive-up area. So we can, I'm just gonna go into the space just to give you a feel. We have taken just a, I would say a sort of quick touch, our interior designers have gone in there and, and made some magic, I would say, to update the tellers and add the offices. You can see actually to the, to the left of your screen here, we're really not touching those offices. We're trying to minimize our impact on the project. We understand the project, we wanna get as much bang for our buck and so, and on the areas that we, we feel that we can keep those offices, we're gonna keep them. And then in the areas where we know we need, we need more office, we're adding some. And we're trying to keep it as open as possible. The core of it here is we're redoing the teller line and maybe adding a couple pendants here, upgrading maybe the colors. Down the hall here, we're, we're adding a copier area and another office. But again, just to give you a, a quick look and feel of the space.
Right. Keep in mind, this is schematic, so six months later, if a wall color is different, don't come back and hold me to what you're seeing tonight, but this is just to, to help to bring it to a 3D level.
And it moves much quicker on my screen than it does from there, but anyway, that's Again, from the entrance, from the front door entrance, we're keeping these offices.
That's the entrance to Second Street.
Here's a view looking back out to Second Street from the other entrance. And you can see we're, we're making these counter lines so that it's easier to use, easier to interact and that just makes it more, a lot easier for people to access and get the services they need. And I'd be happy to go through any part of this as you would like.
Does anyone have any questions about that portion of the building?
I got one, Mr. Chairman. The commissioner's room, how many people do you plan?
Can I hold that? Any questions about the teller area and that portion? Then we're gonna move to the other side.
Are you including in this a safe for overnight funds and a security system for observing both the people that come in and leave the building and the people who aren't there?
There is currently a safe in the water department existing that can be relocated to this building. And the, we're not 100% sure, there are some security measures in place since this was a previous bank, so there are already cameras over certain locations. We're not 100% sure yet how much of that will be able to reuse, but that is part of the plan to have some type of system there.
Yeah, so in the construction documents, we actually are calling to keep some of the camera systems that are already in place, are, are still there. And as time goes on, if, if the county feels like they have funds to upgrade that security equipment, they can do so right now, out of the box, they could go in there and try to use the equipment that's there now. And we're gonna relocate, we're not trying to demolish any of the security equipment. So we're gonna try to relocate it so that if you walk up to that teller, there's, just like your bank, somebody's gonna see who you are, can wave, picture taken.
And that's one of the advantages of keeping the customer service area, customer service representatives in the same location that the tellers have been previously.
I'm gonna jump over.
And the, the rest of the, the lower portion of the building's just restrooms where again, we're having to remodel the restrooms, bring those up to ADA compliance and that type of thing.
So back in this area, we're, we're upgrading the restrooms so that they're ADA compliant back here. But again, we still have the, the vault, it's a concrete vault, still have a, still have the door. We don't, at this point in time, feel like we need to take the expense to demolish the vault or anything like that, so we're, we're gonna keep it.
And now we can go up to the other portion of the building?
So today's a really good example of probably why we need to do this project. As many people that are waiting out there, we'll be able to see it a lot more than we currently see.
This plan currently shows there are 95, excuse me, 96 seats here. And as we posted on the wall, in this building, it's 43 is the allowed occupancy. So we're doubling our space.
And, Mr. Commissioner, I think that was your question about how we looked at how many, how many seats we could get. Couple of things we're doing, we're adding bathrooms, just like we have here. When you walk in, there's a vestibule, we'll, we'll have camera si- screen systems, we'll do, we have an audiovisual package that, that we'll design as part of this package. And just like the folks out there want to see what's going on in here, they'll have the ability to do that, not just here, but see it.
Probably not.
Or see.
Yeah, because of egress options and things like that. But there'll be 96 people, the, what, the audiovisual package will perhaps be located in the room so that people at the rear of the room, if they're not able to see up front, will have screens on the side so that they'll be able to see. But all of that will be contained within the commissioner's room.
So we'll, we'll go down to the space and just walk through.
This is coming from Second Street as you want to enter the building.
So this is the, we're looking at the commissioner's table here. You can see the screens, we have several screens so that if you're sitting on one, like we are now, we're sitting on one side of the room. We have that one option just to look across there and hopefully no one as tall as 6'6", I believe, is sitting beside you or behind you. We'll have a couple of options that we would, we'll be able to see the screens. Yeah, that's always a challenge for me when I sit beside somebody who's a lot taller than me. I'm just gonna sort of pan through the space. One of the things we'll, we'll do, we'll take into consideration some of the acoustics in the space, hopefully not have the same kind of concern we have today with this microphone here when people open the door in the back. You can see there was a ramp, as I panned over, there was a ramp that I'm sort of going And even if you're the commissioner and you're sitting out, you can actually, we've got some screens so that you can also see in addition to whatever device that you have at your station. Those other sets of, sets of doors there and there are for some storage, all the furnitures that are similar to how we have today. We want this, this room to be flexible. If we need to pull out tables and create it as a multi-purpose space, we'll be able to do that.
What's the height of the ceiling in that room?
So the height of the ceiling, those of you who have been in this space can probably attest to, it's a very long space and it feels very compacted. Hopefully, it won't feel as compacted, it will be at least 10 feet.
In the center.
In the center. So if you're sitting at the commissioner's desk, we, we have a little drop-down ceiling so that it sort of reflects what, the shape of the, the desk and, and your area. So there is a little bit of a break in the ceiling here, but the, the larger space is 10 feet.
The architects and the mechanical engineer work together so that they can minimize the, the ductwork so that they would be able to maximize the ceiling height in the space. So making sure that the larger trunk lines would be along the perimeter of the space, that way they would be able to have a taller ceiling in the center.
So for the engineers that are present today, who always give architects a really hard time, we have the structure about 6 to 8 inches above the ceiling, which is like almost no space for mechanical ductwork. So we're working hand in hand with the engineers to essentially found different routes so that we can maintain that ceiling essentially 6 inches below that existing structure. So luckily, the structure, if you've been in that space, is 4 feet apart, so we can come down the aisles and go between them. And where, where we can, we'll go through the structure, this open trust structure. So, but yeah, it's a little bit of kneeling some things through some of that structure to make sure we can maximize our, our ceiling height.
That along with playing with some visual cues with the interior designer and paint colors and things like that, we are attempting to make it the best that it can be.
And again, again, we've, this is our, our initial stab at some of these colors, our interior designers obviously still, will, will still need to work to make sure we'll do the final one that will give you a, a nice rendering of what the, what the final colors will be. I don't know if there's a lot of Carolina fans or Duke fans, that always comes up in some of these is, I want Duke color or?
Trying to make it on the red side.
Trying to.
As NC State graduates here.
Really, really, that green would be probably a pretty good neutral color.
In all honesty, the Hoover County flag has been our driving factor, where we have the green and the blue, the grass and the sea, so.
It goes to red.
It goes to Carolina. It goes to Brooklyn.
Sky blue.
I'll yield to the green.
This is our, sort of, I apologize for how I rushed through this, but if you guys have any questions.
Can you go back to the overall? One of the neatest things that I'd like to point out, before you click, again, if you'll notice on the left-hand side, you have the access ramp. So if anyone in the audience needs to go up to present something, they can walk up the ramp or they can do that. So also on the right-hand side, you have steps. Then if you'll go back to the overall view. Can you zoom out just a little?
Christina?
Yes, sir.
You may have said it, but I didn't hear you. How, how much higher is the commissioner's desk than the regular floor?
So we are essentially 2 steps higher.
2 steps, 16 inches.
And, and we're limited, again, if I, if I push you guys up, you get closer to that ceiling.
16 inches.
And now the, the challenge here, I don't know if you're aware, but this space here is 20 inches lower than this space here. They were built at different times and there's ramps down to get there. So when you come, we have a secondary meeting space.
That's what I was about to explain. If you'll notice, if you go up the ramp, the way the commissioners will enter, there's a door behind you and then there's a ramp. So when you go into closed session, instead of the audience having to leave and you remaining where you are, instead the commissioners will stand up and then there will be a secondary room that you'll be able to go into and conduct your business while the audience is still able to stay in the larger assembly area. But you would, it's basically like a hallway back behind your table that you'll sit to the right and then that will go into the existing conference room that's currently in the bank now. So again, we will, that gives you a private space to go in and to have closed session, to have other discussions and also during the normal workday, it will give us an additional conference room for county staff to use.
Yeah, and there's a, you'll see it ramps down, we step up here, there's actually an existing ramp that comes along this, this end here and comes into this space and up here. But this space will, will also have connectivity to the main meeting space, so if you needed somebody as a secondary space that listened to the, to the meeting, actually that could happen in this space as well. As, as well with the screen that you could see it as well.
Any other questions? Just again, the, the progress and the timeline, we are currently reviewing the 95% construction documents. We'll get back to the East Group and then they'll submit the bid package and send it out to the contractors and then we'll be able to come back with some firm numbers for you.
One of, one of the problems we have with our current water department area is that people complain about having to park or find a parking place, space and go inside. And then for our older population, there's no drive-through where they can take the pavement and go through. So this, this location solves both of those problems.
Yes, sir. We are very excited in the water department about that.
Any other questions, comment? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I don't have a question on this, but I wanna make a statement. I wanna tell Christina and the board that the other day, a number of people at a, at a function I was at, came up to me and expressed their satisfaction in dealing with your staff at the water department and said they were very extremely professional and responsive to their questions, their needs and everything else. So convey that back to your staff.
Thank you very much. The water department staff and finance office staff, we, we work very hard for the citizens side of the building.
It shows for the comments on there.
One, one more comment, correct me if I'm wrong, we have 14,000 water department customers?
Approximately 14.
Approximately 14, okay. So this will be a lot customer-friendly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. And we're done, close enough to the break, we're gonna go ahead and take a 15-minute break and we'll come back in at 7:10. All right, we're back in session. We're done, the items for discussion, the first one is the security fees that the court has. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, a situation has developed that I'm quite concerned about in which a Superior Court Judge, Waylon Sermon, has issued an order that says that if, if we allow people to use the courthouse after 5 o'clock each day, that we have to hire 3 deputies for security. Now, whether, now there's law in North Carolina that says that any public building that is not in use may be used by the public for meetings as long as the governing body that controls it doesn't need it. That applies to courthouses, that applies to this room, that applies to school buildings, that applies to every public building in the state of North Carolina. It is unusual when a judge imposes security on a meeting because it should be up to the people who are having the meeting or conducting the meeting as to whether or not they desire to have security there. There is no precedent that anybody that I know of can find that gives the judge the power to do this. So we have a situation here where, for instance, if the, both the Democrat and the Republican Party, in addition to other people, use the courthouse for meetings. And so why do you need 3 deputies there screening people who don't want security to begin with and seeing who's there and looking for contraband? The, I personally don't think these people are criminals and I don't think they need to be searched for contraband. So what I would like to see the commissioners do, I don't know that we need to do a vote on this, but we need consensus, I'll make a motion if, if people decide that I should make a motion, that we ignore the court order. And you may say, gee, that sounds like pretty hefty stuff. But you have a choice in this matter when a judge does something like this. You can either go to court to overturn his order, which is gonna cost the taxpayers a lot of money, or you can put him in the position where he has to sue you. And that's not, that's just good legal strategy. And what I'm proposing is that we allow the courthouse to be used by anybody that wants to use it and that the commissioners, as a matter of policy, direct the sheriff who works for us, that security is not to be provided and the public doesn't have to pay for this. You see, you have to pay for this if you hire security. I think deputies are what, $25 an hour?
No.
Yeah, 25, say 25, even 25 bucks an hour, you have to have 3 of these, you got $150 so the sewing club can have a meeting at the courthouse. And this is, we're getting into ridiculous territory. Another concern that I have about this is, once the legal system starts moving in this direction, they will take over our courthouse. And the courthouse belongs to the people, it belongs to the public. There is a well-known case in Almanzt County about 10 years ago where a Superior Court Judge decided that he owned the courthouse and that he was gonna do this and do that. That case went to trial and the Court of Appeals said to the Superior Court Judge, you can control the courtroom while you're having court. Otherwise, that- having court. Otherwise, that building belongs to the public, and the commissioners are in control of the building. So and they'll decide when it's going to be improved. And he was wanting to build a new courthouse. And he had ordered that a new courthouse be built, and he found out that he couldn't do that. So there are limits on what judges can do. So.
Brian, would you like to comment on our present fee and requirements? I mean, I've heard some conversation, and I was thinking that we required at least one deputy to be there?
No.
Or that that was maybe the-
Not presently, no.
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 You currently don't. We'd had some conversations at a previous meeting about putting some rules in place about using facilities. The concern that was raised, I think, and I think this board discussed it a little bit, was at the courthouse, you do have security from 8 to 5, and you're under contract with a security firm to do that. And then the question was, do you just have security from 8 to 5, or do you have security at other hours to continue to secure that facility? And that was kind of the discussion that was going on. So but you currently don't have any fees.
Did you?
Was that a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion if I need to make a motion. And you know, I move that we ignore this order, allow the public to continue to use under the present policy the courthouse as it has been used in the past. We do not require security.
Second.
And, okay, got a second?
Got a motion. Second, any discussion?
Do we have to move that under a decision?
Not as long as enough of us agree.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
As bad as I hate to say this, but I agree with Commissioner Richardson. But to me, to me, the courthouse is the people's courthouse. And I don't think that we should impose a fee for garden club or anybody else want to come in and have a meeting. I don't think that we should charge them for security. I mean, if the 10 people in there having a meeting, why do you need three deputies? And the other part, I don't, Mr. Richardson, when he go in there, they need to search him. But the fact is, if we continue to let these things happen, the public, the public is paying enough to pay taxes. That is part of upkeep of the courtroom, courthouse. And what drove this is a meeting that we had, and wasn't nobody in court, no way. You can't find a courthouse, nobody in that courtroom after 6 o'clock. And that's when we went over there, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
David, what could happen if we ignored the court order?
You could be found in contempt. I would never recommend that you ignore a, there are different ways of approaching that. But ignoring and refusing, refusing to obey an order is, that's trouble. I never recommend that you do that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
That's the way I feel about it.
Commissioner.
I would recommend that, we have an issue with it, that we have our county, the chairman and the county manager, probably our council, sit down and have a discussion with Judge Sermon. But I would have trouble with that. I think that's the way to go. I just never, I never have liked the thought of ignoring an order like that.
People are shocked.
Yes.
I'm going to say to the attorney here the same thing that I said to Billy Mayo several times over the years. You know, you're there to give us advice. We don't have to take the advice.
Well, Ben.
You haven't always done that. You're exactly-
No question about it.
That's right. And that's not a-
Did you hear my advice on this question?
That's right. And that's not a slam or anything. You're here to give advice. And I appreciate that. That's the advice that you had to give. You didn't have any choice but to give that advice. But, you know, we have to make a decision about what we want to do and how we want to handle this.
All right. Since you've already blocked one of the other ones from being moved into a decision, I'm going to, I'm going to take the chairman's prerogative and not allow a vote or a decision on that. But I will ask that maybe David and I or Brian have some conversation before the next meeting.
I say, send who?
All right.
Don't send me. I already know what, I already know what I'm going to say.
I think they were trying to solve another problem, and they just maybe added some extra language in there. From our public meeting on the budget that we had, it did create some problems for court. It was not properly logged in. So hopefully, we can get that corrected.
Mr. Chairman.
You know, and the real problem that was, is that that was a mix-up over in the courthouse. It really had nothing to do with the commissioners and exactly what we, what we were planning to do. Now, I had been in and out of that courthouse before I retired for 34 years. And there have been lots of meetings in that courthouse. And I have yet to see or remember a situation after 6 o'clock where there was trouble in that courthouse. I mean, the Democratic Party has their convention there. The Republican Party has their convention there. And there are never any, any problems. So I think this is a bit extreme. I mean, because we don't, we don't, we don't need to do that. You tax people to use something they're already paying taxes for. That does not make good sense. And so, yeah, y'all go and meet with them. And let's get this worked out, because I just can't go along with this.
Well, and I agree with Commissioner Langley. The problem that these guys are trying to solve was not our problem to begin with. The clerk, an employee left or was fired or whatever. And that was the employee that the order was placed with for us to be able to use the courtroom that night. Well, it never got logged in. That is not the commissioner's problem, because we designate the clerk of court over there to run that. That's the clerk of court's problem. But these guys want to go way overboard in solving this problem, and it's not going to work, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we're going to, we're going to give it a try in the next 30 days. If we violate it, my concern is, is we're not going to have all seven commissioners locked up. It will just be the chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer to take your place. So I'll serve the time if the judge wants to do that, because I know that he's going to lose.
Well, Mr. Chairman. Yes.
You don't know that.
Yeah, I do.
Commissioner Evans?
One alternative, I was approached, again, by Deborah from the Turnage Theater. We have that there tonight. We've got plenty of room. I understand from my sound guy back here, it'll work good and video. It, I haven't got anything to do with the Democratic or Republican Party, but as far as a venue, she says, y'all give us some money, we would be tickled to death.
You give me some- But the courthouse is free.
I don't understand why we-
We own the courthouse.
We give her a chance. Again, it helps promote their, you know, the turnage, where we'll give you money. And I just would like to say to give us a chance one time.
Well, if anybody-
Well, thank you very much.
Have it at my house.
Gentlemen, we're going to move to item number two. Seth, you will step up there. This is on page 153, his spreadsheet.
Good evening. Again, Mr. Chairman and board members. We call it last month's meeting, the board directed staff to research adjacent counties and then a few other counties in the east relative to their solar farm ordinances, so we could sort of compare and contrast. We ended up getting, contacting 14 different counties, and you've got the list of those there in your item. So let's just kind of start with our findings. Three of those counties, Carteret, Dyer, and Martin, do not have solar farm ordinance. You have two counties in the east that have existing moratoriums, like in Currituck and Hyde County. So if you refer to the chart there in your item, you can see we're, we compared these by height restrictions, setbacks, fencing, evergreen buffer, approval needed, be staff or board, and then the requirement of a bond.
Talk louder. Can you move that?
Okay. It was doing the reverb again. I was trying to stay away from it a little bit. So just to summarize, I think the real major, the most significant of these types of requirements are going to be your buffer requirement approvals, be it at staff level or do you have to go before a board or multiple boards. And then also, it's the middle of a bond. And you can see we're, we're one of two counties that require screening only in front of a particular use, residential and commercial occupied spaces, in our case. Pasquetank residential only. The rest of those that we looked at having ordinances require the entire outline of the property to be screened with an evergreen buffer. And these go into quite a bit of detail as far as how they come up with what individual counties require. But all of them are consistent in the sense that they're an opaque boundary once they're totally grown in. Now, in others, I think there's a major difference. Where Bedford County, we just have a staff review of site plans for issuance of a building permit. Several of the other counties require the planning board approval and/or the board of commissioners approval. In the case of Craven County and Perquimmons, they require both the planning board and then on, to make a recommendation, then on to the board of commissioners for a final approval. And then you see Craven and Pamlico, Pasquetank, Turo, and Washington require a bond for the decommissioning of the solar farms, once they no longer produce electricity. Some of them, after six months of not, of no production, will kick in the decommissioning requirement. You know, I'd be happy to take any questions specifically to any of these that we looked at or-
One of, one of the things that's in here, because the public's not seeing this same schedule, but when you look at these various counties, it varies in the setback from 50 feet to a maximum of 150 feet. Again, I'll repeat that.
Yes, sir.
From 50 feet to 150 feet.
Right. And you'll see where I put a plus sign. A lot of them vary depending on a schedule of particular use. In our case, it's a 50-foot minimum, and then where you've got a residence, residential area goes up to 100 feet. Pasquetank, yes, where you're from property line to where the array will begin.
In Currituck County, before they did the moratorium, their setback was 300 feet. So we're seeing numbers, and we hear a lot about the setback. And that's what people are saying, you know, we need to change. One of the things that we need to change. Other commissioners, you got questions of Seth?
He's still in about that, you had to put those evergreens around it. Is that correct? That's in our ordinance also?
Correct. For the areas that need to be screened, yes, sir.
Did you check within the cities?
Pardon?
Did you check within the cities?
No, sir. And this is strictly with-
And the reason I ask you, one city that I visited to clean up the debris, one of the energy companies wanted to put some goats out there, and they wouldn't allow it. So we need to look at something pertaining to that also.
Doesn't Chocolinity have an ordinance concerning solar farms?
Yes, sir. The thing the town does, actually.
When, when you look at this column, and you may not be able to answer this, Seth, when you, when you look at 150%, is that saying-
That was of estimated, thank you, I do need to expand on that. All the bond requirements, the counties required those, required engineer, licensed North Carolina, licensed state North Carolina, to come up with an estimate, estimated cost for the decommissioning. And then with, when you see the ones that went over 100%, that was for inflation over time. If it's 25 years or 35 years later, they expect those costs to increase. And so that's why some of them would require 125% of the estimated total cleanup cost. Craven County, 125% or a minimum of $50,000 in a bond, whichever was greater. Pamlico, 125. Turo, 150% of the estimate for cleanup.
The, some of the estimates that I've seen in studies done in other states, they've used $10,000 quite often. So what that, what that would require is it would require a $15,000 bond, if that number was true, is what you're saying when you do the 150%.
Mr. Chairman.
150.
Okay. Commissioner Buzia?
I have a question. Do any of these ordinance list their dollar amount?
No, sir. It's a percentage or a minimum, like I said, in the case of-
So the $50,000 minimum would be for the total project, not per acre?
That's right. I guess that would be for a very small site that-
Excuse me?
I guess that would be for a small site that, you know, where the estimate came in under 50.
Other, other comments?
No, other than bonding, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to bond. That would need to be addressed if you did any.
Commissioner Evans?
Acres in there, you get a certain level, you stop, 250 acres, 50 acres.
I didn't see any that had maximum acreages. Of the ones that we looked at, I'm sure there are some out there that do have that.
I think the town of Chocolinity has an acreage restriction. 25.
A mile apart.
25 acres limited to three and a mile apart.
Yeah, a city where it's going to have a lot more density and less land available, I could see where minimums have come in more naturally, or maximum, excuse me, maximum acreages.
So when you have a maximum, when you have a maximum, it shows nothing, that means it can be as high as it wants?
Oh, yes, sir. That's right. Other than if some other building code or some other requirement came in, some other kind of, you know, for a wind load, probably, would that come into play. But we don't have a, we don't have any kind of a maximum height for the solar array equipment.
For, for the record, I asked Bobby Parker to provide me the information as related to three of our existing solar farms in the county. These solar farms are on the county's book. The first year they went on there, they ranged from 170,000 to 360,000, which was their cost. The problem I have is trying to come up with the amount of money-
And that was per acre?
That was per acre, per acre. It means that that's what it costs them to put it in, labor and equipment. Excludes land, if it's leased. If you, you know, $10,000 is probably not going to touch it. If you use 25%, you know, you're up to 42,000 on the least cost, and you're up to 90,000 on the most expensive. The most expensive one, that company is no longer operating in the county. So I think the business model is somewhere in that $170,000 range. You know, when you look at a 25-year period, the materials that is out there is a commodity just like corn, soybeans, silver, and gold. They may have value 10 years from now, and they may not. That's the risk that we take with the bond and with the escrow. The only thing that I, in my experience, on most construction projects, a lot of the cost is related to labor. Now, I've never seen a breakdown on a solar farm, so I don't know how much is equipment and materials and how much is the labor cost to install. But, you know, most, most people consider 50% labor and 50% material. It's probably not that way on a solar farm. It's probably more heavy towards the equipment and less on the labor side. But, you know, for, for people to say exactly what it would take to clean it up in the bond, I think is, you know, is just throwing gum up there on the wall, hoping that there's going to be enough money available to do that. And later, as we move into some of the other discussion, I'll have a comment about the cleanup. But it's not, you know, this is not an exact science, knowing what the cleanup cost is.
It seems- Yes, sir. I think-
I mean, it's true. If it can be recycled, it may be worth the month, enough money to pay for the labor to take it down. Could be. And I don't think we have an expert in this room or in the state that can say exactly what it'll cost to do it 25 years from now or even 15 years from now. Any other comments or questions of Seth? If not, Will. Yes.
Seth, in all order- Seth, in all ordinance, our current ordinance, if the company that leases the property and installs the solar farm, corporation or LLC disappears at the end of its useful life, there's a timeline that says if the, and I'm asking if this is true, that the landowner of the land then is responsible for cleanup?
It says, any structure or associated equipment not operated for a continuous period of 180 days, six months, is deemed abandoned and must be removed within 90 days after written notice from the county. If not so removed, the county may remove it and recover its costs from the operator or owner. If the operator or owner cannot be located or is no longer in business, these requirements shall be responsibility of the landowner on whose property the equipment is located.
So, the landowner then is responsible for cleanup, but the corporation or LLC can, is no longer in existence, and we don't even know what that figure is.
Well, we're not privy to those contracts, so we don't know who's responsible for the cleanup.
Well, our ordinance will tell us that.
No, the contract.
Okay, and the contract could say, no, I agree with you, Mr. Commissioner.
We're not, we're not, we're not privy to that.
I agree with you, but the point is, if that LLC or corporation is no longer in existence, then it reverts, according to our ordinance, it reverts back to the landowner to clean up the property. But you're right...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
Seth, did you talk to anyone about these ordinances, or did you just go online and pick them up?
If I couldn't find them, if they were not listed online, but call, I called them, had, helped them find it or faxed it or emailed.
Well, when did they come up with these figures of 25%, 50%, things like that? They just didn't pull that number out of the sky, did they?
I think they came up with whatever the cost would be, which is the 100% estimate, and then decided to take a gamble on what inflation would be, be it 25, you know, 25% over X number of years or 50% over, you know, over that decommissioning cost. But again, like you said, it's very difficult to tell what the recycle market would be in the future, when they will actually no, no longer produce energy, no longer be effective for the company.
Any other ideas? If not, we're going to move. Thank you, Seth.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We'll move to item number three, AAF Flanders Glass Plant Building Renovation Grant. David?
I'll do my best to boil this down. As you, as you may recall, this, this is an outgrowth of Blue Goose situation out there. And as you may recall, in March of 2013, Pronamic Industries LLC, as borrower, entered into a loan agreement with Beaufort County as a lender, and Blue Goose LLC as the less store. This agreement provides that the county will lend Pronamic $750,000 to be used for, quote, "construction purposes," close quotes, and, quote, "other rehabilitation," close quotes, of the building on Lot 9. Pronamic agreed to create 38 jobs, et cetera, on or before March 22, 2015. No repayment was required if all of the terms of the agreement were complied with and the jobs were maintained for a five-year period following the loan closing. Further, if there is or was a violation of the conditions of the loan documents and was not cured, following the receipt of a written notice from the county, Pronamic agreed to repay to the county the following amounts. On page seven of the agreement, I'm just going to, I'm sorry, paragraph seven of the agreement, states, "Upon violation of one or more terms and conditions of this agreement, the promissory note or the second deed of trust collectively the loan documents and borrowers, lessors, or grantors failure to cure the same within 30 days following receipt of written notice thereof from the lender, the borrower agrees to pay to the lender the following amounts." And it begins at 100% of the funds previously dispersed to the borrower if the violation occurs within the first year following execution of the note. It comes, comes on down to E, which is 20% of the funds previously dispersed to the borrower, if the violation occurs within the fifth year following the execution of the promissory note. It appears that the period for the fifth year is our current situation, and that percentage would be 20%. If all periodic payments were made through January 2017, and I don't know the answer to that, whether they were or were not, this would be the amount of $150,000, which would be owed to Beaufort County. That's 20, that's 20% of $750,000, which was the agreed loan amount. The county holds a deed of trust, second or first position on the premises, which is Lot 9, subject only to a deed of trust to BB&amp;T, which I believe has been paid and canceled of record by Flanders Solutions LLC. As you may recall, Flanders Solutions LLC purchased Pronamic and acquired Lot 9, plus a small tract that was added to Lot 8. On July the 20th, 2017, in the last two weeks, the county received a letter from AAF Flanders of Louisville, Kentucky, that Flanders Solutions LLC was, quote, "permanently closing its facility located 1151 Page Road," close quotes, effective that date. That was November the 20th. To my knowledge, there has been no further communication since that letter. But in addition to that, I placed a call to AAF Flanders in Louisville and spoke to LeAnn Shepherd there and questioned her about what the position of AAF International, which is the name of the big company, is going to take in regards to what we may say is owed to Beaufort County as a result of what occurred. Frankly, I, I was concerned after the conversation that she was not aware of the agreement. She told me that she had not seen the agreement, and so I emailed her a copy of it, and she said that she would get back in touch with me. So, that's where the matter rests right now. We have not, to my knowledge, I don't think we have sent them a letter making any demand on them yet, and I think that's, that's probably where we're headed here unless something comes up. There's an awful lot more history here to all of this, and some of you that have been involved with this may know what that is. I certainly know more about it than I do. I didn't come along till 2013, 14, 15, somewhere in there, when all this was going on, and I, I wasn't working with it. So, what I know is, is just from looking at the agreement and studying that, and all I'm trying to do is to tell you where that is right now.
If I understood you correctly, BB&amp;T has been paid and they're being canceled, so...
That's right.
That means the county, the county is in the first position on the property now.
Yes, the county is, and, and they hold a deed of trust on that Lot, Lot 9, and part of Lot 8.
Right.
That they added to it.
I believe those funds are from the Department of Commerce. They came through the county, the agreement's with the county, but Commerce will come back to us, and more than likely, what will happen, because they use the quarterly employment reports that are filed, when Commerce sees that there's nobody working there, and it might take them two years to wake up, so we don't need to wait too long, that'll be what the basis is, and Commerce will make a demand to us, we'll make a demand to them. But I don't think we should wait on Commerce, as I said, because sometimes state government can take two or three years to do what we can do in 15 minutes. We need to go ahead and pursue getting this thing closed out so we can get the money and pay them.
Commerce is aware, I mean, this letter was to Commerce, and we just got a copy of it, came kind of drifting in there.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So, they are aware of it.
And the council governments managed this grant for the, for the board when it first went in place in 13.
13.
13. So, we've, we've had conversations with them, they're talking with the grant administrator from Commerce to manage it.
Oh, okay.
So, so we believe that the maximum exposure based on the agreement right now is about 150, and, and we're working through that process through the county attorney's office to make that request.
See, the problem, to bring everybody up to date, let's say that they go bankrupt, which won't happen, but let's say they can't pay us for whatever reason, then it'll be up to county to pony up that money.
Well, you hold a deed of trust on the property.
We've got a deed of trust, we have security, but it'll still be up to us to come up with the money. We can enforce the deed of trust, we can foreclose, you know, all kinds of things you can do, but still, it's expense, and we want it to work smoothly.
Well, the reason it took a little time is the notification was sent to 482 Pike Road.
Yeah.
And I had to sign for it the next day, because I was not at home, so, and I think it was two days before I came up here and delivered the letter, but we did receive notification through the email, but the official document did delay a little bit, so. Okay, any, any other questions of David? If not, it sounds like that you're proceeding with them. All right, Bobby Parker? Bobby's going to give us a report on the status of nonprofits not paying solid waste fees.
You probably have in your, Mr. Chairman, you probably have in your book, a list of the nonprofits that were released last time for, last year, 2016, for solid waste that had gotten billed. Those were released, that's $73,839, and it amounts up to somewhere around 500 solid waste, that's nonprofits. Now, with the new ordinance, that the way I understand it, we will just turn those around and bill them for this year, 2017, because these are churches and schools and other items that we think your ordinance, the understanding of it is, that we're going to bill everything that doesn't have a dumpster in the back where you can put trash in, and then you'll pay the tip and fee to the guy that picks up the garbage or the trash. So, this, this that you see tonight will just be turned right around and rolled into the building for 2017. We are having some problems with the software, and we're having to write some new program that's been written, that multifamily residents, I have an apartment building that has 10 units, that comes down as one on the software as we have now. So, what we, what they're doing, I talked to them a lot of today, they're going to write a program in the tax area where we put the tax rates, we're going to have $145 solid waste fee for the multiplication of the number of solid waste units. So, if I have 10, next year I should have 14,000, $500,000 solid waste fee on that building, so. This is where we are today, there's some, still some other things we need to clean up. We did get a, from the city, a list of all the dumpsters that we have in the city, so that's going to help us. My multiplication was not too good while ago.
Yeah, it's 1400.
1450, 500, yeah.
Yeah.
1450. We got some, we got some big apartments that will...
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions, seven or eight of them here, but they, they go to the methodology that goes into this, because in the past, we've had a lot of confusion with the administering of this, and that's how we got where we are, and why we found out these people were supposed to be paying, weren't paying. Okay, well, will, will all of the nonprofits be billed before December of 2017? In other words, they're going to be billed in this year?
They're going to be billed for this year, 2017. They will go out on a 2017 bill.
Will there be a separate billing schedule for this? Or is it going to be embedded?
It's going to be, it's going to be on our tax bill, and it will show probably $145 times the number of units, and that will be embedded into...
Okay, but now, nonprofits don't get a tax bill.
They will.
Am I correct?
They will get a bill in this year. It will be a separate bill, and you're right of that, that they will get a bill this year.
Well, okay, the question is, is the billing going to be embedded in our real estate database, or is this going to be a separate schedule of billing?
It will be in our database where we have all of our billing.
So, we're keeping up with it?
Like drainage, taxes, it will be showing, it looks like an tax.
Uh, okay, and we're going to maintain that database here? All right?
It'll go into the clouds where everything else we have, guys, so.
Okay, now, what, are there any exceptions on this list for billing this year? Who is not going to get a bill this year?
If you have a business and you have a dumpster that you put your trash in, you will be excluded from...
Well, I guess what I need to ask for is, is taking this list, which has almost 500 entities on it, I would like to see, when you do the billing this year, a run of the items that are on this list that are not billed.
We've got, we've got right now, as of today, we went back and looked, and I think we've got 176, if I'm correctly, that did not get billed last year at all. We're going back and sending that list, and we're going to go back and bill those that will be a discovery, so.
Okay, what about, you've got homeowners associations in there, so that homeowners association is going to get a bill this year?
Most homeowners association in the city and some places have dump sites. If they don't, they will get a bill, yes, sir.
All right, well, that's what I'm getting at. If you take this particular list, we need another list of exceptions of people who are not billed, so that we can look at that and see and audit, to be sure that we are covering all of the things that should be billed.
We hope that's a small list this year.
Well, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but, you know, I would like to see, see the list. And I see things on here like, like the Washington Housing Authority. The Washington Housing Authority, and I'm guessing, so don't hold me to this number, probably got 300 units.
Easy.
So...
They're going to have dumpsters at most of these units.
I understand.
So, they will.
Okay, but, but what about other smaller nonprofits that the housing, the units or duplexes or whatever, and they're not split out?
They will get a bill. This is some of the things we're running into today. So, we went back and had several conversations on that, how to fix it, and I think they've come up with a plan to fix this. A lot of our problems came from the migration over to Keystone, to the Farragut system. We've gone up and down with it, we've released some of, and we billed some that we had to release, but I'd rather bill them than not bill them, because we can release it, but people don't tear the door down to get in there and say, I needed a solid waste on my property.
But should not the present revaluation bring up-to-date anything that's missing on the changeover to Farragut? Shouldn't we pick that up as a part of the present revaluation that's going on?
Yes, sir, we hope so. That is what we're trying to get straight right now, we're working on that. We have, my appraisers or the tax office appraisers are going back and checking behind the revaluation to make sure that they're not missing anything.
What about some of these...
They will not catch solid waste.
They won't catch?
They will not catch the solid waste, no.
No, they won't, they weren't told to, they weren't supposed to. We do that ourselves, of working off of this list.
Right.
What about some of these places where people are selling lots based on a contract of sale for a deed, and they don't show up as individual lots on the tax system? of sale for a deed and they don't show up as individual lots on the tax system? How are you going to handle those?
Well, a lot will not get a solid waste in it. Lots, that'd be a building.
Yeah, but there's buildings on some of these lots. How are you going to handle that?
If there's building on them, I hope we've already got them.
Well, you don't on some of them that I'm aware of.
I don't know where they would be.
Well, will the, will the, will the appraisers pick that up?
Yes, sir.
So, you should be able to update your system based on what the appraisers are finding and then we'll be giving those people a bill. But now, how do you bill somebody who is, who has taken a contract for a deed? But, well, he's got a physical address there, so would you bill the individual that's got the physical address there?
Those are deeds, we will not, we will not bill the owner on these some, we've had a lot of this contract sales over the years and to the person that puts a trailer or anything else on that lot, he owns a lot, the owner of that contract gets the bill.
Okay, so.
And we will continue that.
The person who's developing the property and giving the contracts of sale is going to get the bill.
Yes.
Not the person who's living on the property.
That's exactly right because sometimes, as, over the years, we've seen that piece of property with three different owners.
Yeah, three different occupants.
Right, yeah, so we will bill the owner of the land.
Well, I'm concerned that we do the audit on this and that we get everything that we're supposed to be getting because I've gone over the list, being familiar with a lot of properties in Beaufort County, I see some audit problems here.
Well, if we are missing some, it's, I don't know how to get through the system. I'm sure, like anything else, we could miss one or two, but I don't think there's a number of properties being missed. We've got the inspections we go over every year and so we shouldn't be missing any properties.
Commissioner Busio asked me a question and I think it probably needs to be answered by either you, Brian, or Nita. On property that's owned by the county, are we going to have to pay the fee?
It depends. If, if we have a dumpster and that dumpster is paid for, just like anybody else would be paying for that dumpster and paying the solid, the complete fee, no, we wouldn't. That property would be exempt. But if we have a property that is out in the county that doesn't have a dumpster and we've got a car pickup, yes, we would pay that. So, the general fund would pay the solid waste fund its cost because it is a utility. It is not a tax. It is a utility.
And that includes properties that, agencies that we fund, like the school board?
Oh, yeah.
Well, they have dumpsters.
They have dumpsters.
So, they would be, they're already paying that, but, I mean, it's just like us paying our electric bill and our water bill. We pay a solid waste bill.
You've got the state of North Carolina in here. We don't, we don't, we don't charge fees to the state of North Carolina for their offices that they have.
So, if we don't pay, we get foreclosed?
Well, we'll make our payment, but the question is to make sure, and that's why Mr. Parker was saying, we're going to bill folks and then we're going to follow up to make sure that if people do have a dumpster, they provide us the documentation that, yes, I have an existing dumpster and it is paying the full ride because we want to make sure we pick up those as much as we can. And again, and I want it to be clear for folks, this is a utility. It is not a tax. It is billed on your tax bill because the state of North Carolina allows counties to put the solid waste fee on your tax bill, but it is not a tax. It is a utility, just like your electric bills, just like your water bill, just like your gas bill.
For, for the public's benefit, we've only operated this one year under the enterprise, so.
That's correct.
We're still trying to make sure we get everything in there that's supposed to be.
And it's going to take, it's going to take another year or two to get this straightened out. I mean, we can't do it the first year. We know that and we get it exactly one hundred percent, but we might bill some people we might have to release, but I hope we bill them in case we don't have to release.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parker, the nonprofits that have their dump sites, they're going to get a bill also. It's their responsibility to report to you that they have a dump pad.
If, in the city, we're probably going to have that dumpster listed.
What I'm hearing, you know, you've got some, some churches.
Right.
They have their own, they have dumpsters.
That's exactly right.
Well, we're going to still bill them. So, how will they know?
If we're sure they got a dumpster, we will not bill them.
That's my question. How will we be sure that they don't have a dumpster?
Well, we've got a list the other day that some of the churches surprised me that did have dumpsters, so we will look at that. One of the appraisers go by and ride to make sure that everybody has got a dumpster.
Okay.
And that's probably what we're going to do to make sure we get the dumpsters right is let an appraiser go look at it.
The reason I ask that, this is the first time that we have done this and some, some, some nonprofits do have their own dumpsters and it's, and we need to know if they get a bill to bring it into you and you will make the adjustments.
That's exactly right.
That's the part that I wanted to.
That's why I'm saying some of them we might bill and you come in and bring it to us that you've got a dumpster. We will release it. It's a whole lot easier to get it.
But it's their responsibility.
That's exactly right.
To inform you that they have a dumpster.
That is exactly right.
And that's, that's why we need a non-bill list. We need to know who's not being billed just as well as we know who is being billed.
If there's no other comments, thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
We're going to move into the items for decision and Vic, you're up. Item number one is the Motorola MC seven-five-hundred console radio for the nine-one-one center.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You might want to wait until this door is closed back here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Welcome to the opportunity to come for you again to discuss some of the much-needed issues with upgrading outdated nine-one-one equipment. This particular piece is the radio piece that goes inside of the nine-one-one center, what's actually behind the walls, not the towers, not the radios that the responders use. This is what the nine-one-one telecommunicators talk to the responders with. The current system we're using is the Patriot Gold Elite from Motorola, which is end-to-life, end-to-service. Some of you may be aware, about three weeks ago, we had a, a small fire in the nine-one-one center, which was part of the Patriot nine-one-one system. The radio's equipment burnt some components and we were fortunate enough that our vendor was able to provide a used piece of equipment to keep us going. So, it, we've, again, well outlived the life of what we're using. This piece of equipment is a nine-one-one fundable piece. It's five positions. It takes care of the four positions that we use every day and the fifth position that is used for backup within the nine-one-one center. That fifth position is used in times of disasters, hurricanes, those kind of things. We'll staff that position or if we've got to do service on one of the existing positions, we'll move telecommunicator to that fifth position so we can keep operating with all four telecommunicators. We were able to piggyback in on Pitt County's contract to allow us to get much better pricing and we actually, when it came back in, I was not impressed with the numbers, so we went, I went back after them again and was able to get another twenty-five thousand, some dollars out of them on this thing. So, the amount we're asking for approval from the commissioners to proceed with the funding from the nine-one-one fund is the two ninety-seven, one fifty-nine.
Same to you.
Good motion by Commissioner Langley and second by Commissioner Brandt. Questions?
I only have one question. You piggybacked on a contract as a reason there are not multiple bids.
Right, we're using, with Motorola, this system works in conjunction with the state Viper network on the eight-hundred megahertz piece, which is all Motorola stuff. I researched to see if there was any state pricing or government pricing that had already been predetermined on this type of equipment. There's not. I went and talked with different agencies. Halifax County has just piggybacked in on Pitt County's and Pitt County had exactly what we needed, so there was no need to, I mean, Motorola, we need that equipment to be able to marry everything and tie everything together. Another thing this does too is it gives the IP-based system, which is going to network us directly into the state tower in Farmville. So, in the event we had, if we had a disaster that we couldn't even operate in our backup center in Craven County, we'll be able to go to any center with the Motorola seven-five-hundred, which, which we're looking to purchase here, Raleigh, for example. I could go to Raleigh and set up and go to work. So, so it gives us a lot more flexibility in the event of a big disaster. I hope we never see that, but it gives us that flexibility if it happens.
How much training is included in this agreement?
The training, Motorola, they take care of all the training, every, all of our people will be taken care of and trained when this equipment's installed. When it's installed, Motorola will select a vendor that installs it. It will probably be one of two sources, Gately Communications out of Newport News, Virginia, or Wireless Communication, whose home office is based out of, it's either Raleigh or Charlotte. Wireless Communications is who we worked with on the phone system recently. I can say nothing but good things as far as how the, you know, the training went and they bring good staff on board and they make sure that our staff knows what to do with it when they're finished, when they're done with the project.
Any, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think you answered it. I know we do some piggybacking with Craven County. Is that the same system or did you look at the prices with Craven County as you did Pitt?
Craven County had replaced our system a few years back with Motorola MC fifty-five-hundred.
Okay. So, that wasn't compatible with what you've got now?
Well, I initially looked at the MC fifty-five-hundred. The problem with the MC fifty-five-hundred, it's not an IP-based system that allows us to network directly into the state's Viper hub. So, then we're strapped to just Craven County if we have to evacuate and go somewhere to operate our, our center. With the seventy-five-hundred, as I was saying, we can, we can go anywhere that has a seventy-five-hundred system in place because we're all working off the same network.
Okay, ready for a vote? All those in favor of the motion?
Well, one thing, we need to specify that this money is coming from the nine-one-one.
It is and it's budgeted.
In the motion, we need to have that in the motion.
You guys agree to put that in the motion?
Consent it.
Katy, have you got that?
It's in your motion.
Okay, all right, thank you. All those in favor of the purchase, raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, Vic.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Glenn, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, appreciate the time coming to present for you tonight. This will be a budgeted item in relation to remounting a two thousand and three ambulance that we inherited during the White Oak merger. You'll see three quotes before you. The first one is a little over a hundred and three thousand, one oh three nine ninety-six from Southeastern. One hundred and four nine six nine from Atlantic and then Select Customs comes in at ninety-nine six eighty-five and that includes a stretcher with all three quotes. The one thing about Select Customs quote, we're getting a six thousand dollar rebate. Also, they're giving us a thousand dollars for our old chassis.
So, does the six thousand come off of the ninety-nine?
No, sir, only a thousand.
Okay.
Initially.
So, the rebate's in there?
Yes, sir. That rebate is billed in, if you look on the, the flow page for Select Customs, you'll see that one singular page, it actually has it in there where there's a six thousand dollar rebate and then we get a thousand dollar disbursement for our old chassis. That will be used as the initial down payment if this is approved.
I think everyone's had a chance to review any question of Glenn. I think I called you Doug the other day. I apologize for that.
That's fine. I go by either one, sir.
I figured since that was your dead, you wouldn't be offended.
No, sir.
Okay, we're ready for a vote. If there's no question, all those.
Some of them. Is there a motion?
I think we've got a motion in a second, don't we?
No.
We do? Okay. All right, Commissioner Busio, motion. I hear a second. Second by Commissioner Brandt. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed. Vote six to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Christina?
Good evening, commissioners, again. I have two items before you tonight, very similar in nature. Both are regarding the approval of a technical services agreement for McDavid Associates. Back in the April meeting, votes were taken to accept grant funding, grant slash loan funding to do two projects for the water department. Therefore, the next step in the completion of these projects is to award the technical services agreement to an engineering firm so that they can begin the detailed design of the projects. We've attached as a contract from McDavid Associates, which is a very lengthy contract, but a summary of that, it's an eight percent based upon construction costs, so the exact dollar amount will not be determined until bids come in, but that is a standard number. So, the first item, I'm not sure which is on your agenda first, but again, there are two packages. The contracts are the same. The only difference in that is the actual description of the projects.
The, the first one on the agenda is the State Drink and Water Authority and that involves the site water treatment plant.
Okay.
And the construction of a new well at that site. And that total was a combination of grant funds of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand and a loan of seven hundred and fifty-four.
Yes, sir.
Estimated three million.
Estimated three million dollar project. The amount that was included in the engineer's estimate and the numbers that were included in the grant application for that project for engineering was two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars and for the administration cost was seventy-three thousand, so that's a total of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. McDavid Associates staff met with them a couple of weeks ago and discussed this project and again, they still feel confident that the projects can come in in the estimated amount.
Is there a well on that site?
Yes, sir.
There is?
Yes, sir.
We're putting another?
Actually, there will be two wells because we blend water from two aquifers.
Okay, so you're, when you finish the project, there'll be two wells?
Yes, sir.
So, you're blending water from two aquifers? Which one are you, which one is the, which two aquifers?
The Castle Hines and the PD.
Okay. Any, okay, Commissioner Busio.
Is this, was there an RFP led on this contact?
No, sir, there was not an RFP issued for the design firm. The McDavid and Associates did the grant application for the county at no charge to us and what is customary in the, the industry and that other municipalities do is when the engineering firm does the grant application and does the research and invests that time, they are generally the most qualified to design the project and most qualified to carry the project to the next steps.
Have we ever gone to any other company and asked if they would waive a grant fee?
Yes, sir. All, all companies have that right to come in and some have come in and have spoken to us about projects, but no one has, has found a project that they felt comfortable enough that they felt that they would be successful in that. But again, we've issued numerous RFPs in the past couple of years to other engineering firms.
So, what you're telling me then is David, McDavid Associates, since they have knowledge of our water system, they're going to be involved in every project?
No, sir.
Going forward?
No, sir. We're currently involved in an advanced metering project. We issued an RFP for that. McDavid Associates was one of the responders. They participated in an interview, but they were not the selected engineering firm for that project.
That may be the first time.
No comment.
Thank you, Kristi.
Commissioner Booth, did you?
No, I don't have a one.
Giving you the chance.
I just told you my answer.
Right. Anyone else?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brandt. All those in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? That was, vote was six to one?
Yep.
Who was the one that voted against it?
Commissioner Booth. Yeah. I looked to the left to see if you were voting.
What, me?
That was a tough vote for me.
You want, you want to go to the next project?
The next item is a rehabilitation, a replacement of the Gaylord pump station as well as the Bratty valve station. This is, the total amount of this project is one point eight million dollars. We have received one point four million in grant funds. Again, the costs that were included in the engineer's estimate were two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred dollars for the engineering and seventy-three thousand for the administration cost, which would be a total of three hundred and three thousand, three hundred dollars. Again, at the same. Again, at the same 8%, the engineering fee will be determined based upon 8% of the construction cost.
Motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor to approve it.
Second.
Second by, motion was paid by Commissioner Langley, and second by Commissioner Brandt. Got a question.
Yes, sir.
I know where Gaylord's Pump Station is. Is the Bratty Valve, is that on the Bratty Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Any other questions?
I understand comment again. They have knowledge of our water system, so we award the grant, the project. And also, will they fulfill the requirements of filling out the grant paper?
Yes, sir.
Maybe one of these days, we'll have a surprise and have somebody else do it.
Yes, sir.
If it wasn't for these projects that we need, they might be voting against them.
I understand. And once, again, the water system, we are improving and gathering additional information at all times, but once again, McDavid Associates currently has a vast amount of knowledge, and especially for the rehabilitation of a pump station, that they have the knowledge there. That they were not involved in, if I do not say this, Van Lewis will call me tomorrow morning, that they were not involved in the original design of the Gaylord Pump Station.
And this is on our property, correct?
Yes, sir. All of these, both of these projects will occur on our property, so that residents will not be impacted. So the grass will be put back to our specifications and driveways and that type of thing.
So we're not going to get any calls from residents?
No, sir.
When, when I get them, I'm going to give them your number.
I get them anyway. They all complain.
No, sir. We will not be going through anyone else's property for these projects.
Okay. Did we vote? We haven't voted. We got a motion, a second on the floor.
Yep.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Vote was six to one.
Thank you.
Katy, thank you. All right. We're down to item number five, the sale of alcoholic beverages before noon on Sunday at licensed premises. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I turn your attention to page 375. This is the agenda item. As you'll recall, at the end of session, the General Assembly passed and enacted Senate Law, Senate Bill 155. That bill made numerous changes to the ABC rules. One of those, and it was commonly called the Brunch Bill, allowed counties and cities, at their discretion, based on passing an ordinance, to allow ABC sales for permitted owners, not ABC stores, but for permitted, for those holding permits, to begin alcohol sales at 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. Previously, the law has been that it stopped at midnight Saturday, and you couldn't start selling until noon on Sunday. Actually, since 1968, boards and cities have also had the opportunity to extend that until 7:00 a.m. Monday morning. But this is a reversal of that. This allows you to back it up. You are required to pass an ordinance to do that. Currently, the town of Washington Park and the town of Chalkwindy have already adopted this ordinance. It is an individual ordinance based on your jurisdiction. So those individual jurisdictions have the authority to pass it in their jurisdiction. So ultimately, what could happen is if some did and some didn't, you could have a checkered board across the county. Your jurisdiction is only in the unincorporated areas of the county. Now, this, again, this does apply, there's a little bit of misnomer with, when the Beverage Association, the Restaurant Association put this out, it became known as the Brunch Bill. And they talked about restaurants would not be able to serve mimosas or Bloody Marys on Sunday morning with brunch. The law applies to all holders of ABC permits. So this would mean the corner grocery store, any, any business that holds a valid ABC permit, if this were passed, in the county would be allowed, would be allowed to exercise that starting at 10 o'clock on Sunday morning. You have letters of support for the early sales ordinance from the Washington Beaufort Chamber of Commerce, also from the Washington Tourism Development Authority. I would bring to your attention that, in accordance with the general statutes, if this board moves forward with this ordinance tonight, it has to be a unanimous motion because it isn't.
It ain't going to pass tonight.
It is an ordinance. And as you're aware, from a county perspective, it's different from municipalities, but from a county perspective, the effect of an ordinance has to be a unanimous decision by the board for it to immediately go into effect. If not, it can be brought back, or it must be brought back, at the next regularly scheduled meeting for an additional second reading, and at that time, it can be passed by a simple majority. So be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any, any questions of Brian or our attorney?
You know, the main places they're going to be serving alcohol in Beaufort County is going to be in the municipalities.
More than probable.
You know, you get out in the county on Sunday morning at 10 o'clock, you know, of course, what I recommend on Sunday morning at 10 o'clock is the communion wine, if you got to have some alcohol. So I'm not going to be voting for this thing because it's just, it's just backing it up too far. But it's, even if we pass this, it's, it's not going to mean that there's going to be a lot of liquor served, other than some of the so-called blood buckets, where they're still hungover from the night before and they're still laying around on the floor. They may want a shot at 10 o'clock in the morning. That's the only people that's going to help. So I don't think we should encourage that because it's going to make more work for the sheriff.
I guess the one that's outside of municipalities would be the country club.
That or any, like, like a convenience store?
Right.
A convenience grocery store.
The country club doesn't know his restaurant until 11:00.
Till 11:00. Okay. All right. What is, what is the wishes?
Well, I don't think it's really going to impact in a negative way, so I'll make the motion that we pass it.
Okay. We've got a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second? Okay. Any, any further discussion before we take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion, is it four?
Three.
Three? Okay. All those, all those opposed? One, two, three.
Sorry, won't happen tonight.
Okay. So one of the things I read is that we have 90 days, but you're saying that it has to come up again?
Well, according to the statute, it has to be heard again at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And if you hear it then, or if you don't hear it then, you have 100 days for it to be heard again.
Okay.
So, but we will put it on your next agenda, and at that time, it's a simple majority.
All right. We're down to item number six, the release of two properties from our hospital lease agreement and modification of one of the properties involved under the lease.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you recall, the county and Viton Health are currently in a 30-year lease agreement for certain hospital property that's owned by the county. There have been discussions between the county and Viton Beaufort Administration about three different properties underneath this lease. That came about because of discussions that had been brought to our attention, one directly from a, from an agent, a real estate agent that came directly to the county asking about a piece of property that was under the lease, and then from Viton Administration who had gotten a request from a physician who is not a Viton physician about a piece of property that was under the lease. Both of those pieces of property are not currently being occupied by Viton. They're sitting there and are vacant. You see where we say the release of two properties, there are two properties on the agreement. They're generally described as 1240 Cow Farm Road and 601 East 11th Street. We have spoken with the county, the Viton Beaufort Administration about that. They've talked, their corporate counsel, corporate counsel's been in touch with the county attorney, and they believe that, or their corporate counsel has said they're fine with, with a modification to that lease agreement. What this would do is, is allow us to sell those two pieces of property. They would release it from the lease agreement. It would allow the county to then sell those pieces of property under your normal upset bid process, which is required by statute. And then you would, the agreement would be that you would split those, those profits with Viton. Viton would take half and you would take half. And that would release those properties from the lease agreement. Otherwise, you would get into an issue of where you would essentially have to buy out those properties from the lease if you wanted to sell them. And, and then, again, I guess you're 25 years left on the lease. So that's the piece there. It puts it back on the public tax rolls. The third piece is a modification of one of the pieces of property that's under the agreement. It is generally described as 604 East 12th Street. It's a property across from the drugstore. And their request is to be able to, to take that building down. It's not being used. They're saying they have a lot of issues with it. They want to take it down and use that area for parking. They would be responsible for all of those costs associated with that. So those are the, those are the three items. We'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
The, the other two properties, the one on Cow Farm Road is the old dermatologist's office?
It is.
Who was in the other one?
It was Dr. Alligood, Toby Alligood.
Toby Alligood's office.
That's, that's the one across from the dentist's office.
From, right. Adjacent to the dentist's office and behind CVS.
Dr. Wood was in there for years.
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Wood was in there.
All right. Questions of Brian?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We've got a motion by Commissioner Busio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans to approve changing and releasing the two properties in the lease and for the modification of the one property being across from Taylor Drugstore. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Okay. We're down to the fiscal year 1718 Tourism Promotion Funds. That's you, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we're just seeking some direction from the board on this, on this piece. As you'll recall, in the 1718 adopted budget, there's $15,000 that the board appropriated for tourism promotion activities. There haven't been any guidelines that have been set by the board on the dispersment of those funds. Those funds last year were dispersed in three $5,000 increments for fireworks to different municipalities. We have since, since there was a little more discussion at, at the budget hearings about this this year, we've received some inquiries, one from the Bell Haven Chamber of Commerce about those funds and how they would be dispersed, and also one from the Arts of the Pamlico, specifically requesting that some of those funds be used as a sponsorship for the 2018 Wildlife Arts Festival. We are simply seeking your direction on how you wish for us to disperse those funds. You know, one of the ways you may choose to do that is to limit those to no more than $1,000 at one time to any one entity. Like I say, last year, you dispersed it in three large groups, and you spent fire, you did that for fireworks. You may say, you can do that this year. You may want to set a committee up to look at it and have people turn in requests. We just need to understand more clearly how the board wishes to appropriate those funds for tourism activities that are requested by tourism agencies in the county.
I think we should, the fireworks thing was very successful last year. Everybody enjoyed those things. The whole public got to see them. It brought people to town. You know, I, I think we should just do the same thing we did last year.
I can't believe you're saying that. Well, I, I got more telephone calls on the wasteful spending of fireworks, and I can't imagine that you're in favor of that.
I got a lot of compliments about the fireworks displays, and a lot of people enjoyed them. And they're going to be back this year. Now, you know, you guys need to decide, you're sitting here right now, you're going to, you're going to spend this $15,000 and another $15,000. I mean, if, if you're going to give these people the money when they come back this year again, then, you know, that's a decision you have to make. You're going to spend double money, or you're going to solve this problem.
Well, Brian used the illustration of me, you know, why wouldn't you go to the bank and get cash money, go in the parking lot back here and take a match and strike the...
That's what you're doing when you give it for fireworks.
Fireworks. I apologize. I should have asked you in advance if I could, if I could say that. I, I like the idea of placing a maximum amount on, on the grant, if you want to call it a grant or fireworks, whatever.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman, I personally would like to see a set of guidelines. We have, we're going to have a lot of agencies coming in for fireworks, which were successful, or other projects that they want. So I think it would be appropriate for us to set guidelines so we know we're handling out this money and let the result of this.
Are you volunteering to be on a committee?
No, certainly. I'd like to, right?
For, for $15,000, you're, you're going to an awful lot of trouble on a problem that's very easily solved.
Then it's first coming.
A committee and a meetings and, you know, my time is more valuable than that when there's, when we can sit right here and decide where to put this money.
Normally, you want to attend all the committee meetings.
Yeah.
What I'm concerned about is, is then it becomes a race. Who comes in first?
It becomes a political deal.
Comes in second, comes in third.
It becomes a political thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to put this on, on the September agenda.
Okay.
And give us a month to talk about it, find out what we really need to do about it. Because me, for one, I'm not going to vote for fireworks.
And I, and I'll second that. Okay. Does that give, that's not giving the guidance that you want?
Get out your matches.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm just saying.
That's where it's going to go.
You're, you're pushing it out a month. And the reason I say that is that the folks at the art festival, at the Arts Council, the Arts of the Pamlico, are in the process right now of seeking sponsorships for the 2018 Wildlife Arts Festival. And, and they had requested like $1,000. Just to put that out there so you all know that. I mean, I'm happy to tell them they need to wait another month.
We haven't given them any money in the past, have we?
What about, Mr. Chairman, what about if we say, postpone it to September, and the chairman, the committee, the county manager come back to us a set of guidelines or a process, or a process of them?
I really hate to see us spend a lot of time on a $15,000.
But, Mr. Ward.
I mean, to me, the biggest thing is do you allow fireworks? And the other one is, what is the maximum amount? So that we, you know, we don't get accused of Bell Haven getting half of it and Washington getting half of it, and nobody else in the county gets any money.
Split it in half to three, then we give to three different entities last year for fireworks. Give each one of them $2,500 a piece.
We ended up doing four. We ended up doing four.
Give each one of them $2,500 a piece, give the, what's his name, $1,000 over there that Brian's advocating for, and do whatever you want to with the rest of it and get this thing over with.
I'm not advocating.
It's all rat hole money anyway. It's rat hole money.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if we're going to do fireworks, each municipality, I mean, what started it off last year is when we started, we'd done it for the city of Washington and we'd done it for the veterans. If you do it for fireworks, there still need to be a minimum amount that you, that we place on it because, we've got six or seven municipalities?
Seven.
Seven. And, and believe me, somebody else is coming and asking for some of that money. Bell Haven gets it, Chalkwindy's won it, Chalkwindy's won it, Bath won it, Bath won it, Pantigga. And rightfully so, they deserve it.
Well, there's only four of them last year that, you know, four possibilities.
That's because they didn't know about it.
Pantigga's going to go to Bell Haven, so.
Well, but they got the same opportunities. Pantigga got the same opportunities to ask for some of this money that Bell Haven has.
Well, we can make the decision and get this thing over with. Twenty-five hundred, I move that we give twenty-five hundred dollars for fireworks, to be used for fireworks. They don't use it for fireworks, they don't get the money for the city of Washington, the town of Bell Haven, the town of Bath, and the town of Aurora.
And Pantigga.
No, Pantigga's gonna go to Bell Haven. Isn't that right, Mrs. Mayor? Okay, and.
You might want it for something else, though.
And.
You might want it for something else.
Well, no, we're not talking about for something else. We're talking about for fireworks, you give a thousand dollars. That's tourist, tourist is no doubt, if you give a thousand dollars for the Wildlife Arts Festival. All right, you got four thousand dollars left over. Does anybody have a suggestion to go into this motion?
I, well, we gotta have a second. Anybody wanting a second?
Well, you can't, we're, I'm, I'm constructing the motion right now, so we got four thousand dollars and what is part of constructing the motion, does anybody have a suggestion of what to do with the four thousand dollars? So I can complete my motion.
How much you want to give the fire, for the fireworks?
Twenty-five hundred dollars each.
Well, Bell Haven's already asked, so we could give them a thousand for the.
Chamber?
For the tourism.
For the Chamber, yeah. I don't have a problem with that.
Why don't you give everybody a thousand?
That leaves you.
That's fifteen people.
That leaves you three thousand left.
Good, we just ended second month of our year.
Okay, the three thousand will sit there.
Okay.
That's my, that is my motion.
That's the motion. Is there a second to the fireworks?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Not me.
Well, it looks like it's back in your lap, Brian.
We'll be glad to bring you back a recommendation in the next meeting.
Good, good. All right. Now we're down to item number eight, the county ordinance on solar farms. This is Commissioner Busio.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, working with Commissioner Richardson, we passed a motion to gather ordinances surrounding area and also we had some discussions about the current ordinance. What I'm proposing here is that the Chairman appoint a committee of three commissioners and when working with staff, review the county, the current county, Beaufort County ordinance, the solar farm orders from surrounding counties, and then prepare for consideration and report back to the full board on recommendations for changes, if appropriate, to the current ordinance. And as a discussion topic only, I did prepare, not, not an ordinance, but discussion topics in the various areas, including environmental, studies to be done, bond issues, a number, a number of things in that, that document that we could use for discussion topics only. Just like I said, the point is in the direction. It's only, it's a small document, it's only about eighteen pages, which I believe everybody's...
Yeah, I want to be clear about the motion now. You have the issue of the county ordinance on solar farms, but I, did you not mention moratoriums in there?
No, no, no.
That doesn't have anything to do with this?
No, no. This is strictly a committee to look at our current ordinance and the surrounding ordinance is the document is the starting point that I put together and in this committee to go through this whole thing and then come back with recommendations to the, to the full board. And I put in here an October date and we can, oh, so, you know, go further if we have to.
Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second before we get into discussion?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Evans. All right, now we're open for discussion.
So this is just the start of the process of developing a countywide solar farm ordinance?
No, we, we already have an existing one, so this would be.
Modifying.
Currently update. Right. Okay, I've already had two commissioners. Any other questions?
Commissioner Booth on it.
Well, you want to serve on it?
Yeah.
Okay. I had already had two other ones volunteer, so the committee, I would recommend in a motion that Busio, Bren, and Booth.
Killer bees.
Serve on that committee. Is there a second? You made.
I made the motion.
You made the motion.
And Jerry, you seconded.
Can you include the three individuals in that motion?
Yes. And included in the motion will be, appointed by the Chairman will be Commissioner Bren, Commissioner Booth, and myself, Ron Busio.
Killer bees.
And we've had a second. Did you agree with that, Evans?
Yes. Yes.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. Okay, we're down to item number nine, the moratorium on solar farms, and that is mine. I spent some time this afternoon trying to put in paper what I wanted to say. I, I don't normally read a statement, but I'm gonna read this one and make sure that hopefully I don't offend anybody in the room and that we can, we can move forward with actions that we need to take. For the last four months, the commissioners have discussed the proposed solar farm. We have listened to issues on both sides. We've listened to issues as it relates to being positive and negative. And I have a folder up here of correspondence, emails, and so forth from both sides of the issue. One of the things I think that we really have failed to realize in, in all of this, and, you know, I've, and you may not believe this, I mean, I've been accused of really not taking this stuff serious. I want you to know, I've wake, I've, I've been awake at two o'clock in the morning and my wife will verify this. You know, this job is not very easy. And, but we ask, I ask for it, so, you know, I'm gonna, I'm stepping up to the table. First, federal and state elected officials have passed bills and developed policies related to renewable energy. Your elected officials have made those policy decisions to protect our environment, blah, blah, blah. Their policy is being placed at the doorsteps now of the county commissioners to execute their desire to have a renewable energy plan. So, we're now in the process of working the sausage and trying to make this thing work. The end result is the product is electricity. We've had comments during the discussions, during public comments, is that, you know, we're producing a product here in Beaufort County and it's not even gonna benefit the people in Beaufort County. Electricity now is just like corn and soybeans. When our farmers produce corn and soybeans and wheat in this county, I could tell you, it does not stay here. Some of it goes to other locations. It may go to Goldsboro, most of it stays within the state. But electricity now is put on a grid and it really, we don't know who the buyer is and some cases, we don't know who produced it. It's out there on the grid and we have people making decisions every day whether we get electricity from solar panels or whether we get electricity from nuclear energy or coal or natural gas. There's a trading desk in the state of North Carolina that covers thirteen states and sixty-five million consumers that are buying and selling electricity on a twenty-four hour basis based on the forecast for weather conditions. Your commissioners have been very supportive of property rights in Beaufort County over the years. I've only been a player for the last three years, but I think based on conversations that I've had with previous commissioners, we've always tried to protect the property rights of our citizens. We've tried to see out of the business decisions that's been made by the property owners that own the three farms in the Tarashea community. All three have signed contracts that are governed by the state statute of North Carolina. Any strong arm in by the county governing board, which is your county commissioners, such as spot zoning would result in a potential lawsuit. And I say potential, I think it's a reality. The county's existing solar ordinance only requires a setback of fifty feet from the property line and one hundred feet from a building or a personal home. In my opinion, this, and I'm saying my opinion only because we got seven very independent people up here, is that a minimum of three hundred feet from the property line and maybe a thousand feet from any home or commercial building would be appropriate. It is not appropriate to have it one mile from a school, whether it is public or whether it is private. Now for the future of solar farms in Beaufort County. We must lobby our state legislators to provide a sinking fund to clean up these solar sites when they are closed. The utility industry, again, in thirteen states plus the District of Columbia, that by renewable energy produced in Beaufort County or Halifax County or Johnston County or any other county in North Carolina, must guarantee that the funds will be available for cleanup of any of these potential toxic soils or unsightly sites. If this happens, the land could be converted back to farmland or planted in pine trees. Listen to this. Sixty-five million retail customers in the thirteen states benefit from the production of solar energy in Beaufort County or any county location within this thirteen states. Everybody talks about green energy, that's part of the green energy. But we should be asking sixty-five million consumers to pay the price of any potential cleanup. It is unfair to ask one of our landowners to do the cleanup. It's unfair to the county and our taxpayers for us to take any liability. I think the liability could be there, talk about bonds and other things, but I'm not willing to let the county take that on as a potential liability. One other change, we need to work on the state statute that restricts the county's ability to tax solar farms at one hundred percent of the capital cost. At twenty percent, Beaufort County will collect an average of sixty thousand dollars, and I say an average of sixty, over the life of the one in Tarashea. When we should be getting three hundred thousand, we should be getting a hundred percent of this. Here again, the state legislature and the federal guys have imposed that statute. It's not something we've chose to do at the county level. If we do nothing, twenty-five years from now, the county would end up with real estate that I think could have zero tax base, and that's not good. The cleanup cost could be fifteen thousand dollars an acre, could be twenty, five thousand, or it could be ninety thousand. What, what I'm saying is, is this is an important issue in the state of North Carolina. It's a land use thing. I mean, I have farmland and I live on the farm. I don't like somebody taking the ability for me to rent that land or sell it. But what I think we need to do is we need to make sure at the end of this, the cleanup cost is shared by the people that benefit over the life of this, the sixty-five million. I said on the State Association's Ag Steering Committee, we have talked about this issue. We cannot get past first base. But what I'm gonna ask at this point in time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move that we instruct our county attorney to draw up a resolution for a two-year moratorium until we can get the state to make some adjustments in our existing laws for the cleanup and the other one being land use and also the taxing restrictions. And so that's my motion and that's my sermon to you, so.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Bren. Now we're open for discussions or comments, questions.
I'll come in.
Okay.
And I just want to make it clear that the moratorium is not gonna affect the ones that are already in progress. It's for any new. That's pretty much where it's gonna be unless, unless you tell me I am wrong. I think I am right. People who have already started them, you're not gonna be able to stop them. It's for any new people who come in and want to do this. You can tell me if I'm wrong. I believe you're right. Let me be sure for definition.
Yes.
We're talking about the Wilkinson Project cannot be stopped by this moratorium. Is that correct?
I, not based on the legal advice.
Neither can the one south, excuse me, neither can the one south of Chalkwindin.
Right.
Or any other one that has submitted plans and the, really the date for stopping anybody is gonna be the date that we enact your proposed ordinance.
That's, that's correct. And, and if I understand it right, Brian, if we move forward with this, then we will have a public hearing and then we'll actually have a resolution to have the two-year moratorium.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I, what we would suggest to you is that you, enacting a moratorium is something not to be taken lightly. The statutes specifically define certain things that you must address when you enact a moratorium. Those are listed for you on page three eighty-five in your agenda. That's out of the general statutes. So our recommendation to you is that you work with the county attorney to address those specific issues so that if you move forward with it, that it stands legal scrutiny. Otherwise, it doesn't do you any good. Then you would bring that forward to the board to look at, at your next meeting. If you agreed with that, then you would set a public hearing because you have to receive public comment on it. Because you are greater than sixty days on your moratorium request, there's a additional notification you would have to do. The statutes clearly state if it's, I believe, thirty, sixty days or less, there's one type of notification. If it's sixty days or greater, there's another type of notification, a little bit longer publication. You would need to do those things and then receive public comment and then you would have the opportunities to vote on that, to enact that.
I've got a question for you.
Yes.
Getting back to what the, the county manager said, the thing that troubles me here is if we don't do this right, then, correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney, John Q. Public can come in and say, you can't tell me what to do with my land. Is that, is that correct if we don't follow these state guidelines?
Again, not speaking for the county attorney, but what I'm saying is there, under the statutes, there are specific items that you must address when you put a moratorium in place. And a moratorium is not just, we don't want this. A moratorium is, we see an issue, we're going to address this issue by doing this and we anticipate it's gonna take us this long to do this. And then you gotta say, we're done and we start over again.
But we got to meet those statutory requirements.
You do, there are four of those that you have to specify.
Would you mind reading them for the general public?
I'd be glad to. It says, "Any ordinance establishing a development moratorium must expressly include at the time of adoption each of the following. Number one, a clear statement of the problems or conditions necessitating the moratorium and what courses of actions alternative to the moratorium were considered by the county and why those alternative courses of action were not deemed adequate. Number two, a clear statement of the developmental approvals subject to the moratorium and how a moratorium on those approvals will address the problems and conditions leading to imposition of the moratorium. Number three, an express date for termination of the moratorium and a statement setting forth why that duration is reasonably necessary to address the problems or conditions leading to the implication, the imposition of the moratorium. And number four, a clear statement of the actions and the schedule for those actions proposed to be taken by the county during the duration of the moratorium to address the problems or conditions leading to the imposition of the moratorium." So it simply means you've gotta say, this is the issue we believe, this is how long, this is what we're gonna do to fix those issues and this is how long we think it's gonna take us to do that. It keeps you from just arbitrarily saying, we don't want to do this, we don't want to do this and dragging it out and dragging it out and dragging it out, or just saying, we don't want it at all. So you've got it, you've got to, you've got to address those for it to stand legal scrutiny.
And what statute is that?
That is NCGS one fifty-three A, three forty H.
And, and isn't commissioners, commissioners cannot supersede any law that general statute, North Carolina legislators put in place. We can, we can go up to the law, but we can't go past that.
You are, you are creatures of the General Assembly and you can only do what you are expressly authorized to do by the General Assembly.
But if I understand this correctly, just saying, we don't want this is not sufficient.
No, sir. You've got to specifically call out what issues you believe.
You gotta define the issues.
You do, and you have to say, here's how we're gonna solve those issues and here's how long we think it's gonna take us to solve those issues in addressing that in our solar ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think the two issues you mentioned would be covered by this. You're talking about dealing with the state legislative body, you're talking about taxes and you're talking about cleanup. And it's gonna take at least two years dealing with the state. If we do it in one year, it's gonna be.
And I don't want, and I don't know the answer to that question, Commissioner Busio, because I, I don't know the way, and again, you know, this is a, this is a legal matter in which the attorneys need to look at it. I think there needs to be some additional discussion with, with folks who, at the School of Government who do this. Because I'm not necessarily sure that a, that the county can say, we believe the problem to be a problem of the state of North Carolina and the state of North Carolina has to fix that and we're not gonna allow it until the state of North Carolina fixes it. I'm not sure the statute, I'm not sure it contemplates that. I'm not sure it can be something that you don't have control over and you don't necessarily have control over state of North Carolina. But, but, but I don't know.
But we've got control over taxation. I agree with what you're saying, but, but we do have control over taxation from the standpoint of equal treatment under the law because you're definitely not getting equal treatment. Some people are paying heavy taxes on their property and other people are getting big tax breaks now. The legislature does this all the time, but to tell you the truth, that's the only part, and I agree there's problems with it, but to tell you the truth, that's the only part of this thing that appeals to me because I think you're gonna have to dig deep to prove the technology. I've heard a lot of accusations, I happen to be very familiar, I'm extremely familiar with rare earths and I can delineate that if I have to. But you're gonna have a problem finding environmental problems with the rare earth elements themselves because those problems have never been proven. Ocean doesn't address them, nobody else addresses them. They don't get into the human blood, the human chemistry, so it's gonna be hard to dig to find those things. I do like the taxation part of it, though, and I agree, that's, that's the tough part of it. And if I vote for this, it'll only be because of fairness in the taxation issue because that's a good hammer for us to put out. We may only get two years of PR across the state with other people saying the same thing. That may be the advantage that we get out of this is more people climbing on the bandwagon with the state of, hey, you guys have allowed lobbyists to bring you money, 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 and you, you have, you have not allowed the counties to tax fairly, so you need to fix your problem if you're gonna take all of this money from these lobbyists. So I like that part of it, but I think the rest of it's gonna be a...
During our state Ag Steering Committee meeting, the two that we've talked about this... During our state Ag Steering Committee meeting, the two that we've talked about this, we talked for two hours and the very final thing that we wanna talk about is the cleanup at the end and the cost of that. And how do you handle it? Is it a bond? Is it an escrow account? I mean, all these things have financial liabilities. You know, there's no assurance because you have a bond. At the end of 25, 25 years, if the industry, I'll go south all at the same time, some of these bonding companies are not gonna be around. They're gonna file bankruptcy. So that's, and what we can't agree on is every county is trying to do this on their own and come up with a plan.
Well, part of the problem is nobody can prove that there are gonna be horrendous cleanup costs at the end of this because rare earths are in very short supply and they are easily recycled. The stuff may be worth more then than it is now.
So, you know. I can't, I can't argue with what the value is gonna be. The only thing I can tell you is everything is a commodity and the price can go up depending on the supply and demand.
That's right.
And that's really the key. I mean, if it's worth something, I agree with you. There's probably not gonna be a cost to decommission one.
I've got another question. The other thing is, how long is Camden and Currituck moratorium? How long is it for?
I, I don't know the answer to that. Do you know?
Because you, you gotta be, you gotta be careful with tying up people's property for two, three years. That's something else.
There, there's no reason that I, I would think that we could reduce that if things fall in place and we all agree that to remove the moratorium. Could we not?
I just wanna make sure we don't wind, like, I mean, I'm not, not like Mr. Richardson wearing to go to court. I just wanna make sure that we don't have to go up to the General Assembly and stand up there and look like with egg in your face. I don't mind what you're doing, but the thing about it is you gotta make sure that you covered ABC because we don't have, we don't have the thought, we have the authority only two, two times a year to replace legislators, but legislators can replace us anytime they get ready. As long as you don't, as long as we, now that's, that's the law.
Yeah, but I think, if I may, the Currituck included an exi, a.
You got it, Seth.
Project that was gonna be constructed. So they, they stopped an existing project. I think Currituck did that.
Can we stop it?
No. Wait, he's not, he's not recommending that.
If they decide to sue you, I don't think you can. You don't wanna go, you don't wanna put the county to that kind of expense.
The difference between the two motions, yeah.
Yeah, you don't wanna go to that expense.
Seth, did you, did you find?
Probably need a little bit more time to read through all the history of it. What they ended up doing was a tax amendment to their zoning ordinance, remove it from the table of uses. It just means it's no longer allowed. But we don't have a zoning ordinance. That would be.
Okay, so we.
A different method.
They have county zoning.
Correct.
We don't.
They just cut it out.
Different way.
I mean, I think you also have the opportunity, this group, this board is gonna be at the end of this week at the National, at the North Carolina Associated County Commission's annual meeting. So there's some opportunity to have some discussion with your peers at that time about things and, and also with, with some of their legislative staff. Again, this is, don't want to overstress that this is not something to be taken lightly or entered in too quickly. You need to make sure that you follow the rules and make sure that it will stand judicial scrutiny because it will be challenged, it will be looked at. So you need to make sure that if it's what you wanna do, if you wanna move forward with it, that you are, you are correct in, in following the statutes and abiding by those.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any more?
What's the motion?
Any more questions? A two-year moratorium. While we ask the State General Assembly to address the candid concerns for cleanup, land use and tax and restrictions.
I got, I got one question.
All right.
And you hit on it briefly. If we install this moratorium, can we, can we relieve it at any time?
I, I believe you could.
Yeah.
Yes. I mean, you don't have, I don't think you have to say it's for two years and we're not, and we're not gonna do anything. You're not locked into that two-year. You could, you could go about it earlier. But again, let, let me just make sure that we're on the same page. You can't enact that moratorium tonight. There's a process. And, and our understanding, my understanding in the conversation is that what we're going to do, the next step, is to sit down with county attorney and based on the conversations and the discussions you've had about your concerns, draft a ordinance, put a draft together that would come back to you after we've had some opportunity to have some discussions with folks who are experts in this field, like the School of Government and planning folks. Bring that back to you at your next meeting for you to look at and say, "Yes, we like this" or "No, we don't like this." And at that point, say, "We want to move forward with a public hearing at that time." And then you would be the next month with your public hearing and then you could act on that after receiving comments from your public hearing because you, there's, there has to be a public hearing involved in this.
Y'all gonna cover those four bullets that you just read in your ordinance?
That is what we would wanna do and then have the board review that to make sure that that's what, that's what you wanna see.
As long as you cover those four bullets that you, that you read for the general public, I don't have a problem with it.
I think you're gonna have trouble finding issues that are provable that'll stand up. I think that's where the.
We need a little time to work.
That's why the hard part's gonna come.
Yep.
We'll find that out.
Well.
But again, you, you, we don't have anything for you to move forward yet.
Well, right, right.
I had intended not to vote for this. I'm willing, I would just as soon delay it for more thought as the manager suggested. You know, I'll vote for it on the basis of moving forward. The only part of it that I think that we're gonna get anything out of is the taxation part.
That would be a big win.
Yeah, but the moratorium won't take effect probably for three, four, five months. So everybody's got a project, it's got plenty of time to run into the door with it.
It would also allow us, if we chose to put money in a restricted account, we could take part of that tax money that we're not getting out of the 80% or some amount and put it in there, so.
And we're gonna be working on the ordinance at the same time.
Brian, is, is that, that percentage that we're allowed to get, that's federal legislation, isn't it? Those.
That's, that's state tax.
That's state, that's property tax.
That's state property. And of course, you're bound, you're bound by the Machinery Act.
Okay.
You don't make tax law.
Okay.
The General Assembly makes tax law.
I got you.
You only follow the tax law.
Just to make sure Frankie don't go to jail.
Well, I, I don't.
I won't take your place on this one.
I don't wanna go to the jail, but.
I already got you in jail. Don't worry about it.
I really don't like the idea of the State Utilities Commission coming into Beaufort County and our state representatives telling this group that this group up here can stop it. It's not the case.
It's not true.
It's not the case. And I think somehow or other, we need to flip that back at them for whatever it's worth. They're elected officials.
Oh, they're appointed officials. They make about 100 and set, last time I heard, they make.
You're talking about the Utilities.
Utilities Commission makes about $175,000 a year for each person that's sitting up there. It's a big political payoff plum.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna.
So, so just to be clear with the board, timeframe-wise, what we anticipate is this would be about a two-month process.
If not longer.
Well, our goal for you would be to bring you back something at the next meeting for you to review and say, "Yes, this is what we meant." And, and by that time, the county attorney and, and our folks at the School of Government would be able to say, "Yes, we believe this would meet judicial scrutiny." Then we would bring that to you for your approval and then at that next meeting, you would set a public hearing for the next meeting. You could then act after that public hearing if you so chose to.
So you're saying in October, we could take that vote?
Yes. If you so chose to do that, unless we don't run into an issue.
All right.
We need a vote on it still.
Yeah, still need a vote, but I don't wanna cut anybody off from.
No, I'm, I'm, you know what my position is. There's.
Commissioner Evans?
There's parts of it that are good.
So essentially, the small farmer in rural areas that you can't even find or land up these paths and he's trying to figure out a way to make a living. We've kinda put this guy's on hold because it's.
That's right.
So.
Well, it's, it's not just the small farmer. I've, you know, we get, we get to.
Just trying to say, we got a guy's trying, we had one earlier that's trying to make a living.
He's already, he's already got, he's worked out. Am I right?
Until we decide what we're gonna do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This moratorium would do what I want it to do because I've always said that we're up here to protect your property rights. Well, this moratorium would allow us to protect the Christian school's property rights and it would also.
No, it won't. No.
Why won't it?
It won't. That's what he's, they.
I'm, I'm just saying in the, in the, in the future, not now. I know we can't help you.
We worried about now. We're not.
But it does, it, it will allow us to protect each other's property rights.
Okay, okay. Please. All right, we're ready. I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
I'll vote for it.
All right.
I don't think it's going anywhere, but I'll vote.
It was unanimous. Okay, we're down to item number 10.
Mr. Chairman, I have something. I just wanna direct something to the chairman.
Okay, I'm.
To our planning.
Wait, wait, wait until.
I, I just, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Seth and yourself.
Excuse me, excuse me. Bobby, hold that handle, so.
If, when the permit comes in now on solar farm and based on our fiduciary responsibility, we have to ensure that all federal and state and county requirements were included, correct?
No, not really. We only have to ensure that all the county laws and regulations are done. Federal and state's up to them.
I mean, currently in your ordinance, you, I don't think you address those. I mean, you could in your ordinance say, "We wanna see a copy of any federal permits that are required." I mean, I guess you could do that. You could add that.
Well, this, this question that, about the notary, which is, which is a penalty, not witnessing a signature, you know.
I, I think that's outside your per.
It is, it is.
Commissioner, I, I'll restrict you from going there.
Yeah.
I mean, I really don't think that that's, I think that is a, that is a private contract negotiation piece. I, I don't think you as a.
So the permit then, when we look at the permit application, we're not concerned about the backup documentation to that app?
I think that, I mean, that would be just like any other business deal. If, if, say for instance, and don't anybody throw anything at me, say for instance, you had zoning in the county and you, and you said, "Well, we're gonna allow a car dealership here." And you issued the permit for that. But the deal between the guy who is getting the dealership fell through because some legal issue occurred. It doesn't matter. You know, either it does or it doesn't. You've got a timeframe on that permit and that, and it expires and they've gotta start again.
Can I say something?
Okay.
Commissioner Langley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And I, and I, and I think I'm right is all their permitting, a lot of it was done under the solar farm thing. So it just rolled over to the solar panels. So it's still every permit they had for the solar panels roll over to the solar panels. Am I right or am I wrong? The same area, right? Is it the same property?
No.
Yeah, you can answer. Is that all right? Ask the chairman.
I, because of the time limit, I, we've already had enough discussion tonight on the solar. We're gonna, we're gonna move right on with the agenda. We're gonna go to item number 10, the bid offered to purchase property on North Market Street. David?
Yes, sir. You will see there in your book, William T. Booth made an offer to purchase what is apparently 532 North Market Street. Made an offer of $500 and made the required deposit with me, which I am holding. And ask you to approve that. As you know, we have to advertise it one time for 10 days in the Daily News to see if there's any upset bid to that. And the good news is that we get it back on the tax rolls, which right now it's not.
I, I assume that this piece of property is not suitable or does not have enough space for a building.
It's now in the flood zone. It's a small piece of property. There's other pieces of property about the same size of it. If you combine them, you probably do something with it. And I didn't look to see who owned the joint, but, but I move that we accept William Booth's offer.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Richardson and a second by Commissioner Brand. All those in favor.
Confirmation?
Yes.
I'm not benefiting from the sale of this property at all.
You're his first cousin, right?
Yes, I'm, I'm not. I want to go on the record.
Full disclosure.
Yeah, that's full disclosure.
So your name is not William Ed Booth?
No, my name, my name is Edwin E. Booth.
Okay. All right. Any, if there's no other questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the sale, raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous.
Thanks.
All right, now we're down to item number 11, which is a bid and offer to purchase land. This is on Highway 32 adjacent to the meat farm. David?
This is Gladius Peel Jr. made an offer to purchase this property. He bid $1,001 and made the required deposit. It's the same situation. It's an odd shaped, well, it's triangular. I don't know if odd is or not, but triangular shaped piece of property. Apparently, right, adjacent to.
The meat farm. Yeah. Yeah. I move we accept the offer.
So I move.
Okay, well, motion by Commissioner Brand and a second by, I mean, Commissioner Richardson and a second by Commissioner Brand. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Vote was unanimous. Item number 12 is the Beaufort County Community College Board of Trustees. Katie?
The press time is necessary for the board to appoint someone to the Beaufort County College Board of Trustees due to Ms. Lee's passing. You've appointed her back in June. I've included a couple of statements of interest applications from people that are interested in this whole thing and either nomination or nomination.
Okay, I, I've talked with the other two commissioners that are nominating each one, and we have three. So we agreed between the three of us that each one of us would nominate one and say whatever we wanna say about it. And then we would take a vote and we would eliminate one. And then we would go for a second vote and eliminate the second one.
What about if there's a majority?
Well, if it's a majority, I'd take.
Unless it's a four.
Then it's over.
Right, right.
It's over if there's a four.
I got you.
If there's a majority, though.
I got you, I, I got you.
Very similar to the way we do our chairman's...
But if nobody wins the majority, then...
Yeah.
Then we'd follow that.
I mean, I, I think it's good that we got three people that are all qualified and would like to be on the Board of Trustees. It's the first time since I've been on here that we've had this, so I'm, I'm going to yield to the other two commissioners, and then I'll be the third one, so... Do you want me to go first? Would you like to go first, here?
Sure. I have the honor of nominating David McLaughlin for Beaufort County Community College Board of Trustees. I'd like to remind everyone that Mr. McLaughlin was the president of Beaufort County Community College from July 2001 to May of 2012. As a former president of the community college, worked, David worked hard to develop a list of knowledgeable and reliable contacts from Beaufort County to Raleigh. One of his biggest assets is, that is one of his biggest assets, and is very important for the development of the community college. I would read all of Mr. McLaughlin's accomplishments, affiliations, and honors, however, it's getting late, and it's about time to go home. So I'm nominating David McLaughlin.
Okay.
Former president of the community college.
Here.
All right, I'm, I'm nominating Florine, which most people know about Teresa Kennedy. She's a graduate of Elizabeth City State. She was a social worker for 34 years, and 20 of those years, she was a supervisor with Social Services. Started out here in Beaufort County, then went to Washington County, and ended her career with Department of Social Services in Martin County.
Okay, I, I would like to nominate Chuck Williams. Chuck is a resident of Pantica. He is the city exec and vice president of Southern Bank in Bellhaven. He has a degree from East Carolina University, an MBA in Political Science. He currently serves on the Pantica Town Council. He also serves on the Beaufort County Community College Foundation, and also serves on Tri-Canny Communications. He's been at Southern Bank in Bellhaven for 23 years, and he is very knowledgeable of the metropolitan area for Bellhaven, Bath, Pantica, and has a lot of customer and clients in high Canny. One of the things that I would ask that we consider in this is, currently, we do not have anybody from the Pantica, Bath, or Bellhaven area. We do have representation on the South Side of the River, but really, we don't have anybody down in the area that knows potentials and can help, help have a positive impact on enrollment at the college. So at this point in time, we're going to do this alphabetically. So the first one is Kennedy. So all those in favor of Kennedy, raise their hand. Four? Okay. All those in favor of McLaughlin, raise their hand. Okay? All those in favor of Williams, raise their hand. Gentlemen, we had four, so that is Kennedy, is our newly-appointed trustee at Beaufort Community College. Now we're down to, down to, we moved item number five. Who had asked us to move item number five under the US SELLER contract? Annanita, I guess you're up for questions?
Well, I, I, yeah, it's so late, but we'll have a go at this. One of the things I'm concerned about, we, we've got all these telephone bills, who else are we doing business with for a telephone company?
For our cellular contract?
Yeah, do they have the exclusive for the sheriff's department, Social Services, and everybody?
So they have the sheriff's office, and they have what I'm going to say is all other, other than DSS. DSS is on a separate contract with Verizon.
All right, when these bills come in, who, who, does the bill just go to finance, and finance pays it? Or does somebody look at these bills to see what we're getting and whether the bill is justified or not?
They're reviewed by the departments and signed off on by the departments before they're paid.
Somebody in the department signs for them?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not like each month.
Every month?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, since we moved it, we still have to vote on it and approve it?
Yes.
Will you have to make a motion?
I move we approve it.
Seth?
Wow, you guys want to get out of here. Which one, which one seconded it? Okay, Brenn. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Okay, we're down to closed session, and I'll ask Katie, will you read us into the closed session?
A motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 154-318-11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to reserve or return my equipment between the attorney and the public body in the discussion of existing litigation, jury versus board of directors, 17 CBS 313, and to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiating agents concerning positions we take in by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property for purchase, purchase, option, exchange, or lease in accordance with 151 NC App. 651 2002. The property location is 227 North Restus Street. The property owner is Restus Street Properties, and the full use of the property is parking and office space.
Take a motion to move into closed session. Motion by Commissioner Brenn, and a second by Commissioner Langley. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. We'll now come out of closed session, and at this point in time, we will take no action, take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.